Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everybody to the June 12th Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting. And first thing, I'd like to ask if you have pagers, cell phones, or any other electronic device? If you would turn those off or silence them now, we would appreciate that. If you are not the applicant and you have come here today to talk to us about a case, sheets like this are available on the table right outside the chambers. And if you would complete it and reference the agenda item you'd like to be heard on, we'd be happy to hear you when we hear the item. And with that, we'll go to the minutes of the last May meeting. Commissioners? We have a motion and second to approve the minutes of May 22nd. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Next, we have four uncontested requests for continuance. Item B-46, PC-10368 deferred to July 10th. Item B-47, C-6595 deferred to July 10th. Item B-48, ABC-808 deferred to June 26th. Item B-49, PUD-1535 deferred to June 26th.
Did anyone come here today to talk to us about the items just read, 46 through 49, on our agenda?
Oh, yeah.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the uncontested continuances. Cast your votes. Those are approved.
We have six new requests for continuance. Item B-12, C-6612 deferred to June 26th. Item B-17, C-6557 deferred to June 26th. Item B-20, SPOD-767 has been withdrawn. Item B-24, PUD-1540 deferred to June 26th. Item B-26, CE-879 deferred to June 26th. And item B-38, C-6586 deferred to June 26th.
Okay. With the exception of item 24, where some people have signed up, is there anyone who's come to speak to us on any of the other items that were just read?
Mr. Chairman, Tim Johnson, on behalf of the applicant. On item 12, we discovered that, right before the meeting, that the Traffic Division had signed off on our distance issue. So we'd like, that was the only thing that was making this deferred. We'd like to keep it on if we can.
That's fine.
Thank you.
In that case, a motion to approve the additional continuances except for items 12, well, item 12, and we will hear from the people who signed up on item 24.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second for the additional continuances. Cast your votes. Those are approved. Are there any other continuance requests from the public today? Okay. Consent docket?
We have nine items on the consent docket. Item one is C-6604, the final plat of Prestige Park. Item two is C-6614, final plat of the sushi bar. Item three is C-6615, the final plat of The Cove at Pleasant Grove. Item four is C-6619, final plat of Westgate at Wilshire Hills, two, section five. Item five is CE-883 to close right-of-way for the Maps Park. Item six, CE-882, to close a utility easement located at 13351 Northwestern. Item seven is CE-881, to close and vacate a public utility easement on the canal. Item eight is ABC-810, which is an overlay for the I-2 district located at 6512 Northwest Expressway. And item nine is ABC-811 for an ABC-2 overlay at the PUD-944 district at 2001 Northwest, 142nd.
Okay. The consent docket is items one through nine, except for item two at the moment. Did anyone come to talk to us about any of the other consent docket items?
Move the consent docket, that item two included.
I'll get him. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket, pulling item two to hear it in order. Cast your votes. That's approved. Now, David?
We had submitted a request for 24 to be continued. Is that, are we going to hear that item?
We've got people here who want to speak today, who came to speak to us.
And we did reach out. We spoke to the group that we met with Saturday, and at least those folks had indicated that they were okay with the continuance, but that may not be the case for everyone.
Well, let's hear from somebody who signed up for item 24. Do you have a spokesperson, or do you want me to just call the name off the sheet for the folks who've signed up on item 24? There's quite a few of you. Could you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, sir. Kim Heaton. I live at 601 Shamrock Circle. And I can't speak for everyone, because I haven't spoken with everyone that's here today or all of my neighbors, but I didn't agree to a continuance. And I have been a contact person with the group. They contacted us after we received a copy of the application for the rezoning in PUD-1540. And they asked us to come and meet with them. And I arranged a meeting. I had some of our neighbors come that I could contact. It was last minute, so it's hard to get very many of them. I just had about a day and a half or two days to do it. But I've not agreed to a continuance. We were coming today ready. In fact, I dropped the petitions that you had before you off this morning. And I know that, as of yesterday, no continuance was requested, so I just assumed they were going forward.
Okay. David, tell us, since you're all sitting here, why do you need a continuance?
One of the tracks within the PUD, there were some technical issues that need to be resolved with staff and a redraft portion of it. And it just came to light last night about 10 o'clock. And, so we did reach out to everybody that we knew and had numbers and let them know before they had left work. So we know at least a couple of people had told us that they were okay with the continuance. But we'd be happy to address all the issues on the floor. We just thought, because there are technical issues within one track to the PUD, it was probably best to revise it and have staff have the opportunity to review it.
Well, Commissioners, what's your pleasure? We do have several people who are here today specifically on this item who signed up to speak.
Well, I think 26 is also a companion item with this. Is this happening with?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I guess I'm confused. The applicant wants a continuance. A lady that says she's clear that doesn't want a continuance, she's been pressed for time to have meetings. I'm not adverse to hearing this today. Or am I adverse to continuing it? But there are a number of people here and there's issues that haven't been addressed. Maybe an option would be to slip it through the heel and see if they'd go out and call and at least agree whether they want it continued or not.
That's fine with, that makes sense to me. David and Richard?
No.
Will you do that?
Yes.
Would the folks who signed up on item 24 just meet these three gentlemen and outside in the, outside the chambers and see if you can at least identify the issues that are of concern and come back? And then, at the end of the meeting, let us know where you stand?
Thank you.
You're going to hear it. Okay. We're ready to hear item two, which we pulled from the consent docket. Want me to find it?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Dwight Butler with Anker Engineering. My client owns their property next door to the sushi bar.
Uh huh.
And my client actually sold the property that the sushi bar is going in on to the person that these people bought it from. And we do have a cross-access shared agreement in place between the property to the west and the subject tract. We just need to verify that they are going to honor that. Otherwise, my client's property has no access to the frontage road.
Well, let's hear from the applicant then.
All the others coming up. Chairman, my question would be, there's an agreement in place that's outside the purview of this commission.
Well, we can't enforce it.
As would the enforcement be.
Right. Just a quick yes or no to, Mr., give us your name and address, and then just a quick yes or no to Mr. Butler's question.
Sean McGraw, Red Plains Engineering, on behalf of the applicant. The shared access agreement will be honored, yes.
You will honor it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all we need. Take a motion on item two?
Move approval.
Item two? We have a motion and a second to approve item two. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Under items requiring separate vote, item 10 is SN-080, a resolution naming an alley, Ballet Alley, east of Robinson between Northwest 8th and Northwest 9th Streets.
Shane? And give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Shane Jewell. I'm the executive director of Oklahoma City Ballet. My address is 1210 Northwest 18th Street. Oklahoma is the only state in the country that has ballerinas painted in the Capitol Rotunda, and it speaks to the long history and tradition of this art form in this state. Six years ago, Oklahoma City almost lost our ballet company. Tulsa Ballet came in and made an offer to buy us out. And in many ways, that galvanized the board and the city to rally behind us. Six years later, we are the fastest-growing arts organization in the state of Oklahoma with over 200 percent increase in our budget in those six years, and that's starting in 2008, in the middle of a recession. We make this proposal because we feel it stands a strong commitment, Oklahoma City, for its arts and culture scene, and a commitment for this organization to continue to sustain and grow. We are competing on a national level as a city, which means we need nationally-recognized arts and culture. This is currently an unnamed alleyway. We have already raised all the funds needed for the renaming of it and all the applicant businesses around and have 100 percent signed off on this.
No one signed up, Commissioners?
I move approval of the application.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve item 10. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Gail, nice to see you.
Item 11 is PC-103-
Oh, Jeanette. Sorry.
PC-10376 to rezone 10900 Northwest 23rd Street from PUD-153 and PUD-1506 to the R2 residential district.
Tim Johnson with Johnson &amp; Associates, here on behalf of the applicant. This previous PUD included some R2 zoning, and as we have laid out, that's shown in the black box there at the south end of that east track. As we have laid the subdivision out with regard to the borrow pits that were left there, that hold water, it became obvious that it was easier to use the R2 zoning on the north end, closer to the highway, and use the south end that's zoned R2 as single-family, which you'll see on the plat that follows. So we ask your approval.
No one signed up? We have a motion and a second to approve item 11. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
And item 12 is the plat, which is C-6612, revised preliminary plat of Mar-A Lago. Is that how you say it? Located south of Northwest 23rd and west of John Kilpatrick Turnpike.
Again, Tim Johnson with Johnson &amp; Associates. We have several TEs, one variance request. Item TE number three was the clarification on the entrance point. The previously-approved preliminary plat had the, what's called, "Lago Court" up towards 23rd Street. It was previously approved, and we just slid it about 100 feet, and it's all one slope. So the staff was kind enough to get that information to us to allow for that entrance to be approved. There is one variance, I think it's on TE, apologize, six. All the rest of the TEs we're in agreement with.
Again, no one signed up.
The variance to you six.
Second.
Okay. A motion to approve the variance. Cast your votes. That's approved.
And move the application.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve item 12. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
And that's approved.
Item 13 is PC-10376 to rezone 131 Northeast 50th Street from R1 to I-2.
Pole of fever for the applicant. This is a area of town that is primarily I-2. This is a little track that has just been a residual track in this area and still zoned R1. The proposal here is for office warehouse space. We've worked extensively with neighbors to the east and the west and have their support at this time, and would like to request approval.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions? No one signed up?
There's no protests.
No?
I move approval of the application.
Okay. A motion and a second to approve item 13. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Item 14 is PC-10370 to rezone 12900 Northwest 10th Street from AA and C3 to the C3 district.
Sean McGraw, Red Plains Professional, on behalf of the applicant. We came before you guys' last planning commission meeting, or not directly last planning commission meeting, but it was continued on. At that time, it kind of further developed the scope of the project. And at this time, we just want to come forth and ask for the straight C3 zoning on this property. This property does already have approximately a third of it zoned C3, the rest agricultural. So we'd just like to complete the track as C3 zoning. We do agree with all the TEs that's set forth by the city's staff, and I can answer any questions.
I believe the last time we met, the discussion was requesting of SPOD in order to pull the signage and consider that and answer basically.
The answer is not no. Just at this time, our applicant has not, or, excuse me, our client has not authorized us to pull forth that SPOD. Based upon your commission's decision today, that will be put in place.
Thank you.
So if we move this forward, they will have, their signage will have to comply with our C3 requirements, right?
It would, yeah. What's your, what's your frontage for this parcel?
130 foot, and for C3 zoning, that would limit us to a 30-foot height.
So allow for a 30-foot sign?
Yes, sir.
Pole sign?
I don't believe pole sign is in our plans currently. City code would say so, yes.
I'm not asking you to do a pole sign.
No. They've shared some designs that are a little more attractive than typical-
I know. I understand.
...C3 zoning.
I understand. Right.
Hit the argument with respect to C3. So I'm guessing to the west is a convenience store that has, how big is that?
Not 30.
Not 30?
Probably 15 feet.
Thanks.
So are you saying, excuse me, so are you saying that your client is not willing to do the SPOD, so we can have some type of input on the signage? Because you see, it's kind of, it's kind of an issue here.
I understand it's an issue. They're not unwilling to do the SPOD. At this time, with the way the site is laid out, with a third, approximately a third of it already being zoned C3, it just seemed natural to go ahead and take that on. So they wanted to do this as the first step, come forth to the planning commission, essentially get your guys' opinion on that straight C3 zoning. If that's not an option for us, we'll go with the SPOD.
Well, it probably seems natural to have a 30-foot sign that's visible from the interstate highway, correct?
That is a major potential market that they want to attract traffic from. So, yes.
And I believe that's what we have been objecting to.
Yeah. I believe so.
Yes, sir. You want us to vote, or you want us to continue?
You've talked to your client in the last two weeks since we last met, have you not?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I wasn't here the last time they came before the council or the commission. But I do understand that we asked them to provide a SPOD, or to apply or file an application with a SPOD. And apparently, they've decided not to do that. So-
Well, you're now saying if we were to insist upon a SPOD, they would do that?
Right.
If I hear you correctly.
There's a strong likelihood that the SPOD that we get will have a 30-foot sign in. I'm just saying. If I listen to what I'm, if I catch the subtext here, which is not particularly veiled, everybody in the building is sitting here going, "You're going to get a 30-foot sign." So, you know, even if we get an SPOD, we're going to get a 30-foot sign.
Well, I tell you what, they've shared some drawings with me of the signage, and it's not your typical 30-foot pole sign. I understand the need for a taller sign where they're located. I'm not that concerned with rezoning this small little plat of land, this C3. And so I'm going to assume that they're going to go forward with the plans they've shared with me about the signage and make a motion to approve this.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve item 14. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Item 15 is C-6603, the final plat of Chicken Express, located south of Northwest 10th Street and east of Cemetery Road.
Same site? Same applicant? Does he think we did this already? He thought he was done?
I don't either. Yeah.
Mark Ferris with Red Plains Professional. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have on the issue before you, since Sean left a little early. Actually, it was your name on this applicant, this section of it. We're fine. Commissioners?
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 15. Cast your votes. That's approved.
I'd like to apologize. I thought the items were heard jointly.
Well, actually, it wasn't your name, so you're off the hook.
Item 16 is PC-10374 to rezone 13725 Southwestern from AA to R1ZL zoning district.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Chris Anderson is also here with me. This is the last piece of this case that has, in some form or fashion, been before this commission for seemingly three years now. This was part of a negotiation at council on PUD-1480. Originally, my client had planned two separate apartment projects for this portion of his property, and we agreed that we would have no multifamily, but instead, we would have a R1ZL as you go from the commercial to the straight single-family. So this is just a continuation of this development. Staff has identified no technical evaluations and has recommended approval. We would ask for approval.
No one signed up? Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 16. Cast your votes. That's approved.
Thank you.
Item 17 is continued. Item 18, SPOD-765 to rezone 2101 Northwest 36th from R1 and C1 to SPOD-765.
My name is Buddy Shaddit, 6913 Northwest Grand.
Thank you.
I'm proposing to rezone 2101 and 2109 Northwest 36th to a spread 765.
Commissioners, no one has signed up. Discussion or comments?
I move approval of the application.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item 18. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 19 is SPOD-766 to rezone 1324 Southwest 89th from AA and O2 to SPOD-766.
Hi.
Give us your name and address, please.
Jennifer Billy Meyer from 1324 Southwest 89th Street.
Thank you.
And that's my small business that I have there, and I'm trying to get it rezoned. When I purchased it, I thought it was commercial-zoned already, which it is, but it's the wrong kind. And I'm trying to get it where I can do retail operations from there.
You currently own the business, and it's a retail-style store?
Yes. It's a, it's called Jenny's Thrift. It's a small thrift store. And I also have antiques and crafts in there. Am I supposed to say anything else?
You're fine.
Okay.
You're doing fine. No one signed up? We have the one note.
I mean, even, I've read the letter of protest. I just, you guys have been in business?
November 31st is when, the day we opened.
I've been by there multiple times. I know that they would probably have a lot of traffic. It's not a lot of heavy traffic at any time I've been by. It doesn't seem inappropriate for the area. I move the approval of the application.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item 19. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Item 20 was withdrawn. Item 21, PUD-1534 to rezone 3201 Mosley Road from AA, R1, I-2, PUD-1419, and SP-387 to PUD-1534.
Mr. Chairman, Dennis Box. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. We've got a number of people here, if you all have any questions. But this is an application where we are going to take some of the existing area within the confines of our PUD, and we're going to allow for expansion, not outside the confines, but within the confines of the PUD. The height won't change, and we're asking that you approve a PUD that will allow about 10 more years of life on the landfill. We're here to answer any questions if you have any, and we'd have people respond.
Okay. Commissioners, questions? No one has signed up?
Move approval of the application.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve item 21. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you very much.
Item 22 is PUD-1539 to rezone 9016 South Shields Boulevard from AA and C3 to PUD-1539.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. What you're getting handed out is a series of pictures that the staff also has and will be able to display. This is the old Brookside Golf Course on 89th and Shields. And what we have before you is a PUD that will allow for a nice, high-end redevelopment of this piece of property. It is worth noting, as you look around the subject tract, you have the R1 south of us, and you have an apartment complex south, but all the other borders of this site are surrounded by heavy industrial. You've got straight C4 to the east. We believe that this PUD will certainly enhance the area, and we hope it will encourage further redevelopment of some of those industrial and C4 properties to something consistent with this. What we have provided- What we have provided is three different tracks, and we took great care and a lot of time working with the staff to come up with certain uses allowed in certain portions of the P U D, certain uses that were prohibited in certain portions of the P U D, to come up with what we think is a benefit for this subject site, but also provides appropriate buffering to the south. And we know in past, this commission has said, "Don't show us a box," and all your uses, show us what it could be. So what we've done is we've actually provided two separate potential conceptual site plans. Now, we do commit to a specific plan, so we will have to come back at the time of development, but we did think it was important to show you, based on how this site lays out, how something could develop. So what we've done is provided two separate retail element. That includes some multifamily, some includes some retail and hotel along Eighty-Ninth Street. And then there's also another element where we can envision a large church with accessory soccer fields, nursing home, and also an element of multifamily. We did think that multifamily was appropriate here. You do have it to the south, but what we have are things written in where we buffer the R one. We have a fifteen-foot buffer that we are in agreement with. We have sightline setbacks. We have height requirements that we have imposed within Track Three. So we think what we have is something certainly appropriate. It's something that the comprehensive plan does support. There are five technical evaluations. Items one, two, three, and four, we are in agreement with. Item five deals with signage, and we are encouraged by the sign discussion that was just had moments ago about the thirty-foot pole sign. But I am gonna have Mr. Ruffin come and discuss why it is we want certain specific signage. And in the packet you have, I do think it is important to look at all the signage in the area. We do commit to monument signs. We would like something a little higher, but when we're going in with retail, you have to focus on what your competitors around have, and there's a lot of tall pole signs. We think even a little more height, but with a monument sign with materials that match the buildings that they'll serve, it'll be, certainly, there's a lovely Christie Torbox sign. We think we will have something that will be much better for the area.
With that introduction, Mark, give us your name and address.
Mark Ruffin, two-twenty-seven Northwest Sixteenth. I'm here on behalf of the owner, Mr. Bob Greenberg, and also the developer, which is the R Stieses of Oklahoma City. You know, the site, when you look at it as it's situated, it's at the, it's got three major arterials. I mean, I thirty-five, obviously, the biggest of those, but Eighty-Ninth has, carries a tremendous traffic flow, and so does Shields. So we see this really, if it doesn't become a church site, which is really, that's our intent, and I'll explain why we need to rezone this commercial or at least have that opportunity. But it's ideally situated as a power center. I mean, the highest and best use of this site is probably some sort of power center-type development. And I don't think that's inconsistent with what the staff would see looking at it by itself. So with that, with all that said, what we have requested is something very consistent on the signage with what the, I won't say Planning Commission has approved, but certainly council has, for various retail developments all over the city. So I don't think we have anything inconsistent there. In fact, I took that exhibit that's in the file out of there, or for the sign, out of one of the West Gate rezonings. So with all that said, you know, we feel like we need that signage opportunity to have a legitimate commercial development, so, or power center retail-type development. Why would we need that if we were a church? Well, I just saw this sign that I think Lance is in charge of, I don't know who's in charge of pictures. Very good job here. Crossroads Church, which is a corner from this site on Shields and Eighty-Ninth, I don't know how high that sign is, but I'm guessing that it's similar to what we are requesting. So, and that's situated at Eighty-Ninth and Shields. We want to have some visibility to I thirty-five, which I think we will have, regardless of whether it's a church or a power center-type development. So I think those are pretty legitimate reasons why we want to do that. How does signage help us promote, or at least get, help us do what we need to do? I have an obligation to the current ownership, as we put this under contract, to rezone this property commercial. Why? Because if we don't close, you know, this is what his intent has always been anyway, is to rezone this commercial and the way we've done it. We also need the flexibility to the extent, this is a large, large church proposition, especially for the Catholic Church. I mean, certain Protestant churches have done things like this, but this is a new thing for us. So the fact that we have fifty-two acres there, big piece. It's our intent, though, to utilize it for this purpose. But, you know, it could be we buy this site and really, a typical church site, at least in this market, has, at least for the Catholic Church, has been about ten acres, you know. So we're thinking in a new way here. So it could be that we have thirty acres that we need to do something with in terms of resale. So that's one reason we feel like the signage is important. Could be that, you know, we buy this site, we have another market collapse, and we're not in position to develop the steals of church. So those are, again, I think, pretty, pretty good reasons why we want to do what we want to do. Any questions?
Where's the location of the sign that you're proposing?
Well, go ahead. Do you want to elaborate on that?
Yeah, we don't have the exact locations picked out. We'd have to do that at the specific plan stage.
Will that have to come back to us?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And to touch on what Mark, yes, sir.
Here's where it impacts. Mark has just told us the intent is to see the development, probably what I'll call, well, one of these three we think, but more along the church line.
For a portion of it, yes.
you've committed this specific plan. Why can't we prove your zoning the way it is? I don't see anything wrong with uses for this land that you're proposing. Leave T E five substantially intact and add to it that we will address specific signage at the plan review process. If there's an appropriate higher sign for a retail, when you have a specific plan, then we'll address it. If not, I'm not sure we need to see that for a Catholic church. And I'm an old, a old-time Catholic, so we don't have time...
You should be on our team then, Nick.
Well, but, you know, where I go to church, sign's about this tall.
Okay.
You know what, Mark? We can find it.
You know what? Here's what I'd say to that, Nick, and the Catholic Church has been in the habit of buying bad real estate all their lives, okay? This is not bad real estate. This is good real estate.
Oh, it's not.
This is good real estate.
I'm not adverse to having signage here.
Right.
Mark, we already have sign pollution down there. We don't need to make it worse. I don't know. Maybe we could have a big video board up there with...
Well, let's, okay, yeah, I understand what you're saying, but I just sat here through a, I just sat here listening to some of these deals that you just approved. We just approved a pole sign opportunity for thirty feet.
It was something that was shown to us and committed to.
Well, I'm showing it to you here.
You're showing us something we don't like, and you...
Okay, I'm not sure I quite understand, but I'll let you...
I want to make sure we're understanding.
Maybe I'm not understanding.
We're approving, we would be recommending approval of the P U D, but when we are ready to develop, we would come and show you the specific signage that we would be requesting.
We would leave or add to T E five. T E five in, add to it that any specific sign request would be reviewed at the plan requirement. If you want to deviate from T E five, if you want to build something within T E five, you'd have a right, could be able to do that by right.
Yeah, under the eight, you're talking about the eight-foot limit.
Well, yeah, but as staff has drafted T E five, you can do that anywhere in the site by right. If you have something else bigger and better, if you will, that you're proposing, you'd propose that, bring it to us at the specific plan stage, we can either give it an up or a down.
Well, maybe we could agree on maybe something in between, where we agree to bring in any signage, or maybe you already have to do that, I don't know, that we agree to bring in any signage above X feet, but we're still allowed to have a taller sign, all right? But we gotta have approval of commission of that particular sign and its location.
The difficulty that I'm sort of hearing, David and Mark, is that we've got three potential proposals for how this site will be developed. And I'm not adverse, potentially, to signs like you're describing, if I know where they're gonna be, what they're gonna be for, and we would know that at the site stage. Right now, we don't know.
Well, and I think it's important, like the chairman's saying, that, you know, if we know that it's gonna be retail, you know, we're gonna be pretty much assured that there's gonna have to be more signage. If it's gonna be a church, well, maybe not quite as much.
Sure.
So, and my deal is location. You know, if you're gonna put a thirty-foot sign on the east side of your property along I thirty-five, I'd have a problem with that. If you're gonna put it on Shields, you know, it might be a different story. So I think maybe maybe you need to get a little bit further down the line, knowing exactly what you're gonna put there. Before we actually vote on this thing, maybe continue it for a couple of meetings, and maybe by that time, you'll have a little bit better idea of what's gonna go there.
I think the easiest thing, frankly, is to just take the approval, get the zoning that you want, which gives you your three options, and come back to us with sign proposals when you know, for example, if it's gonna be a car dealership or food store or department store or what kind of, or fast food. I mean, we don't know what, how many, or anything else at this point, and to just give blanket approval and say, "Well, these are the signs, now just go do what you want to do," and then you'll come back and say, "Well, but now we don't have enough signs because we're doing X instead of Y."
Well, John, and I respect what you're saying. How's this any different than any other power center-type request? How would this, this signage request be any different than that?
We're treating them all the same way.
But how is it that these other...
Put it in the context of what we just did up on Memorial Road. Signage we just did for that.
And what, and I don't know exactly what we did there.
Okay, what we did there, it's a large P U D, a good tract of land. developer was negotiating with a couple of very large national retailers, and as part of the deal, they say, "Well, we need substantial signing." Now, this is on a turnpike on Memorial Road, and what we did is we said, "Okay, you land up a commercial re, national retailer, maybe starts with a C. You're gonna have a thirty-foot retailer sign." But it's very specific. It's where it's going to be. If this happens, then bang, boom. You don't get a whole bunch of thirty-foot signs all up and down the turnpike, okay? That's what John's saying here. You have a large site, the point that was made by Commissioner Allen. What's appropriate on Eighty-Ninth or Shields may or may not be appropriate on the I thirty-five front end. And I know you're not actually on I thirty-five per se, but...
Well, but essentially, with signage, we are.
Well, if you, sign-wise, if you've got it large enough and tall enough, you would be.
Sure, that's right.
And those are the things we are concerned about.
Okay. Well, and I would agree that we can, that there's some things we can do to back off that. The blanket requests that we made, I would agree, certainly in light of what you're talking about here, that we should, you know, limit that, okay? But I'm just trying to figure out a way to get the zoning here that we like with the signage, some signage flexibility.
Do it the way I suggested. Take it, way the application's drafted, leave T five intact, and add to it that specific sign request will be reviewed
Okay, that's your plan.
At the specific plan stage.
Rather than, I think the eight feet, obviously, if we want something, you know, more than what this commission is used to granting, we need to explain why and have specific reasons. This commission recently has granted monument signs just on South Western of fifteen foot. So
Exactly.
If we can establish a minimum of fifteen, and then we can prove why we would need more than fifteen. Fifteen still puts it at a reasonable sign.
That's fine.
Okay?
That's fine.
We'd be fine with that.
I mean, we're not trying to prevent you from getting the zoning. We just don't, we just don't know yet what we're gonna get and then what's appropriate with it. That's, that's the only issue.
I understand. We just want to make sure at the end of the day, we have marketing opportunity
You will.
For our church and...
You will. We know the area, we know the site. You will.
Great.
We do, two people signed up. Sir, if you would give us your name and address for the record?
My name is Charles Tibbles, four-twenty-three Brookside Terrace.
Thank you.
Take a look at that board. It's about the fifth house or fourth house there. I do not necessarily object to rezoning it from agriculture to commercial. What I do object to is the possibility that whoever acquired it would put an apartment complex open to the general public. And I object to something like that because if you read the newspaper, watch the news, peoples that move into those complexes generally turn to various types of misconduct or crime. It would also, I believe, devalue the property that I recently bought. Now, I don't know, I don't think I fully understood what the gentlemen were talking about when they were up here before me. Now, if it's a church, that's fair. I wouldn't object to a church being there. But something like, like I said, an apartment complex, I would object to that. Should it come to that, then I feel like I would have legitimate reason to complain to the council about whatever crime or crimes are committed there. And I promise you, should somebody inadvertently, on purpose, from an apartment complex, cross over onto my property, break into my house, should I be home present, I would probably shoot the person right in the armpit.
I'd probably want to stop you there. I want to let you know, we represent everybody in the city, including people who might happen to live in an apartment. All of us here probably have at one time or another. Not all apartments are a problem, and if there's a crime issue, that's why we have the police department.
I believe in living in harmony if at all possible.
Thank you.
Phil Giffhorn, forty-six oh seven, South Western, Oklahoma City.
Thank you.
I represent one of the homeowners. I represent one of the homeowners. I don't know Mr. Greenberg, or never met him, and I don't know how long he's been involved with this place. The golf course has been there a long time. These homes that are lined up next to the golf course have been there over 30 years, and a lot of the residents are still living there, not all of them. I believe Mr. Tibbetts or Tibbles just bought a new home, and he spent a lot of money on it. And he bought it because it's a beautiful place to live, there's not too much traffic around right now. When you look at the changing on the zoning, it's zoning, there's some commercial, they build commercial buildings all around the perimeter, there's businesses all around it. I don't know what, the only reason I can see why he's wanting to change to this, as I said, I don't know anything about commercial numbers and which, the zoning he wants to change to is everything's on it. He said, he comes up and talks about a church, nobody cares, everybody loves churches. You read this thing, there's.
Sir, sir, address us, please.
Excuse me, could you tell me what's not on this list that can be put there?
It's a pretty wide open.
It's pretty wide open.
Yes, it is.
And so, two stories is all they can build right next to the homes, we got 15 feet. You're about 16 feet from me, not very far. So, we've got these homes that have been here for 30-some years, everybody's happy, they like the place, he's just moved in because he thinks this is a great place to live, and now you're going to build whatever, two stories up, 15 feet from his backyard. You're going to put up an eight-foot fence, I don't know if that covers the first eight feet, it doesn't cover the rest of it. It's just, this is a nice place to live, it's been this way a long time, the owner knew that the zoning was like this, and he ought to be able to work with it. If he wants to sell parts of it, or sell it all, he ought to be able, shouldn't have any trouble selling it to businesses. But when you put everything under, under the sun, as being able to be built right next to your home, we're going to, we're going to be upset about it, it's just not fair. Period.
Questions for Mr. Giffhorn, commissioners?
Giffhorn, sir.
Giffhorn, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
No one else has signed up, commissioners? Discussion?
I would like to clarify real quick, the tracks that abut the single family, none of those commercial uses are allowed within that. All the commercial uses would have to be north of those tracks. None of the commercial uses are allowed within that track three, and the commercial uses aren't allowed to start in track two until you get north of the R1, and we made, we put the requirement of two-story as it abuts any R1 use. Yeah, it is zoned AA now, but you could still build a two-story house on AA. So, we did try to work within what the neighbors have next to us, and make sure we pushed any of the commercial uses away from them.
Let's talk about uses in track three.
Yes, sir. Yes.
The area that is adjacent to the residential, and most of those uses appear to be service type, you know, congregant care, that sort of thing. I'm looking for straight multifamily. Where are, if you put apartments in here, where would you put them?
Well, they could go, and we've limited our units to 400 total, and so the density would be somewhere around 20 to 23 for that project, but they could be all in track two at that limitation, but this portion obviously would be limited to the two-story. It could also be a portion of it here, kind of wrapping around, but again, with the same limitations with setbacks.
I'm wondering if that could be free, to have that contiguous area not be straight R4, but more along the lines of R4 for congregant care, or just, you know, any of the assisted living, nursing home, any of that, that type.
Are you talking about just within track three?
Well, in the southern half of track two, anything that's abutting.
The residential.
The residential.
Well, and part of the reason why we put the multifamily here is because it does abut other multifamily immediately south.
But that also, that also increases their concern.
Are we saying, under your scenario, that not the traditional R4, but rather senior independent living, or something like that, in track three, and then in track two, from the south line going here?
Correct.
But then the balance could, would not have that.
Is the concern more density in those areas?
Or is the density up against this residential?
Yes.
Yes.
So, let's talk about that, because it's not the R4 that's bothering you, I don't think.
Well, a congregant care, a nursing home is going to be R4.
No, I understand, but so it's really the density that would be allowed, so, and we've got it to where we're flexible as a race of how we might move these 400 units around, so maybe we could limit, not maybe, we could limit the density in that track, that two, in our, in our track two?
Well, I'm, Mark, the goal here is to, to get the traditional, or if you will, additional commercial apartment operation not, to not be contiguous with, or up against the, adjacent to the residential area, which would be all of track three and the southern third or so of track two.
Well, that would confine everything to right here, correct?
Well, if you wanted the traditional apartment.
Right, an R4, yeah.
Straight R4, yeah.
And I would suggest that maybe we.
What about apartments on the east half of that southern, so that?
Let me make a suggestion. Let's continue this thing for two weeks. I'm willing to sit down, I think we've got, I mean, what, we got 100 items here that we can put in there, or plus?
It looks like a lot, and it's similar to the one we did on western, if, the list looks big.
I understand.
But if you read it, it's not.
But I think we need to look at this thing, I think we need to narrow down just a little bit more what you're actually going to do there, and I don't think we need to negotiate it here. I think we need to sit down with some of the concerned residents, I will sit down with you, and we'll see what we can come up with in that period of time. That'd be my motion.
If we're willing to eliminate the multifamily, like you said, could we move forward, or?
You know, I think we need to sit down with it.
Okay.
Okay.
Two weeks?
Yes.
All right. Motion second to continue item 22 to the 26th of June, right?
Yes.
Cast your votes.
Thank you.
And second. Continue for two weeks.
I just got two cents left.
Okay.
They kind of walked up and took over the mic here. They're trying to get the zoning changed, so they can put anything they want in there. Once they get the zoning changed, they don't have to, it's so much easier. I appreciate, I appreciate the, Mr. Allen, well, on that, because I would like to talk to him, and I'm sure some other.
You're welcome to sit, you're welcome to sit down with him in the next two weeks and have your input, that's the whole point.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item 23, PUD 1537, to rezone 5400 South Anderson Road from double A to PUD 1537.
Is the applicant here?
Yes, sir. I'm the applicant, Roy Copeland.
Okay.
Address 12600 Tracy Drive, Oklahoma City.
Okay. And just tell us what you're planning here, please.
I'm planning to build a boat and RV storage facility, similar to the one that I have on the, across on the north side of Interstate 40. This is just on the south side of Interstate 40, and I'm just basically wanting to expand my operation and get this 10 acres of property zoned for a PUD accordingly.
Okay. Commissioners, no one signed up?
Did you decide a pitch would work for you, Mr. Copeland?
Mr. Allen, I, in the planning commission staff report here, in fact, that I wanted to ask about that, because it's a misprint, I think. It says the roof pitch shall be a minimum of 1.2, it should be 1.12.
Okay. Do you agree to that?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay. Make a motion to approve.
With that, change.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve item 23 with the 1.12 roof pitch. Cast your votes. That's approved.
Thank you very much.
Item 24 is continued. Item 25, SPUD 752, to rezone 4321 Southeast 59th Street from SPUD 660, and R1 single family to SPUD 752.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Kelly Work, my address is 105 North Hudson, Suite 304, Oklahoma City. I'm here representing the applicant, and Mr. Joshua Whitefield is also present. This is a, this SPUD is a limited I-1 uses, we significantly limited the number of uses that would otherwise be permitted in I-1, and the, we're situated there fronting, we have 110 feet of frontage on Southeast 59th Street. All of that area on the, there is, there is a, directly across from us is I-3 zoning, there is an industrial, a PUD to the, that tract that is on the south side of 59th to the east there, and there are a number of oil field servicing companies that are existing in this area. We, with respect to the, we've been working with the staff to make revisions to the SPUD, and we've made a number of them in an attempt to address the concerns that they had raised. We are, with respect to the TEs, we are in agreement with 1, 2, and 5, and we have reached agreed language on number four. We wanted to, we did want to discuss with you all what we propose with regard to the single monument sign that is proposed in the PUD. We are in agreement and have provided already in the SPUD that there would be no pole signs allowed, but we, with regard to the single eight-foot tall monument sign, we are requesting that we be allowed to have a Level 1, like EMD sign, and of course, Level 1 is the lowest level of EMD signs, and it allows only for the static messaging that either goes to fade or dissolve, it does not allow animation, it does not allow moving messages, and we would be, we propose that we would be incorporating that in our existing proposed eight-foot monument sign. We are, we would be agreeable to limit the size of that Level 1 EMD sign to not more than 32 square feet, and just for reference purposes, that's the size typically that you see for, that you're seeing around town on, that churches are using, and banks are using, and some restaurants are using. And our proposal here, we, we're going to build a light industrial building, and we anticipate that we're going to have several tenants occupying the building, and we just want to have an opportunity to use our single sign to advertise and identify each of those businesses. And so, with that, we would like to have that capability, and we would request that be allowed, and we would request your approval. We're not aware of any protest to the SPUD, at least there has not been any that's been filed with the staff, so I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Kelly, did you say 32 square feet on the sign?
Yes, sir. The, on the EMD portion, the, the SPUD presently restricts the total sign area to 100 square feet on the eight-foot sign, and what I'm proposing is.
And it'd be a static sign.
Yes, what I'm proposing is we would limit the EMD sign to not more than 32 square feet.
Do you agree with item four?
We have worked out some, we have negotiated some compromise language with the staff on number four, and we're in agreement, and they've indicated they're in agreement on that with respect to architectural controls.
But you agree with four within the way it's written?
No, sir. The language that we've agreed to is different from what is provided in your staff report, and what we have agreed to provide, to just give you the specific information, is that we will provide a brick veneer on the front, lower, on the front of the building for the lower third of the building, and then for the remaining portion of the front, we will provide four-inch Dutch siding. And there are, in fact, most of the industrial buildings in this area are metal buildings, and there are numerous metal buildings on the residential tracks to the north of us, there's numerous garages and warehouses.
Is that a 25-foot setback, or a 50-foot setback on that building? Do you recall?
I believe it'd be a 25-foot setback from the right away.
Do we have any protester?
No one signed up.
I really don't have a problem with, with any of this, except item four, and I, if you will agree to do the front, did you say the front third?
Yes, sir.
Brick?
We said we would, we have advised the staff that we would be agreeable to do the lower third of the front brick, and then we'll do siding on the balance of the front.
What kind of siding?
Four-inch Dutch siding is what I've been advised is proposed.
Wouldn't be metal? What is that?
What would be proposed with that? This is Joshua Whitefield, I'll let him address that.
It, it will be metal, but it won't, it'll be just like what you see on your typical residential housing, it's not.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it looks just like.
So, it would not be a standing sign or anything like that?
Right, those are called bar panels, and it won't be that.
Okay, I understand. Okay. Kelly, I still don't understand why you need the EMD sign.
I think the reason, and he explained it to me, is because there's going to be several businesses in there, and that would be a little bit easier way to advertise those businesses rather than having a sign that had all the businesses displayed. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes, that's our intention. We're certainly willing to limit it to a single eight-foot monument sign.
It's a static sign, too, so it's not going to, it's not going to flicker, it's not going to move, it's going to be static.
I understand, but I'm trying to find the closest EMD sign to this up and down 59th Street. It's not a church.
Yeah, even, of course, they're just not very much along that corridor yet, but the thing of it is, it's only going to be eight-foot tall.
So, each business would cycle like every eight or 12 seconds or something?
Yes, sir.
Then you'd see a new business name, and then you'd?
How many businesses would be there?
Probably not more than five.
Well, you've got a, got a eight-foot, 100-square-foot sign, you can't put five names on, on a regular sign, but you're going to cycle it every 10 or 12 seconds. If I drive by, I might miss my guy. Doesn't make sense to me, I'm sorry, the EMD part just doesn't.
If he needs a bigger sign.
Well, we're happy to go with the smaller sign, but we do want to have the ability to have the EMD as limited. I mean, here we, this is on Southeast 59th, is a major four-lane arterial, speed limit is 45 miles an hour, and we've got I-3 across the street, the heaviest industrial district, so in our view, it's not an inappropriate location for a very. it's not an inappropriate location for a very limited in size and type of EMD sign. And we feel that we need it in order to be successful with this proposed development.
Good luck getting five tenants who agree to that sign arrangement, frankly.
I don't have a problem with it, but, I mean, as long as it's an eight-foot, it's only 32 feet. You know, is there a problem where they can see, you know, the tenants in there or not? So I'm going to make a motion to approve with the 32-square-feet, eight-foot sign, and the front of the building would be one-third brick veneer, and the balance of it would be residential-type siding. And what did you mention on, was there something else that you didn't agree with?
No, sir.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
That's my motion.
You're saying a 100-foot sign with 32 feet of EMD in it?
Right.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Ready to vote? Cast your votes.
Thank you.
Item 26 is continued. Item 27? Did I skip? Did I skip item 24? Is that to be heard? Not continued.
Where are we, David?
They do not want continuance. So we'll put it on.
Oh, that's right, we moved it.
Okay.
Okay, item 24, we skipped. PUD 1540 to Rezone 12945 from PUD, West Reno from PUD 1389 to PUD 1540.
45 miles an hour. Before they done it.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. Also have with me Chris Anderson, Richard McCowen, and Zach Roach. This is an application that is a bit strange in that what you're looking at is a massive piece of undeveloped land, but there's a PUD in place that was approved back in 2009 that essentially allows all the uses that we are proposing. It just had it designed in a different manner than we are going to, than we will design it. It allows for commercial, it allows for multifamily, and it allows for single-family. Those are all the uses that, that we are likewise proposing. We did meet with the neighbors on Saturday. We reached out to what we believe to be the person that spoke for the group and said, "Bring everybody that's concerned, and let's talk about it." We did meet for about two and a half hours on Saturday, and what we came up with is they were concerned with the types of homes and lots that would be abutting their property. So Richard spent a lot of time over the weekend and early part of this week redesigning the entire layout so that the product type that we believed that they were okay with was now pushed next to them. The apartment complex has been a point of contention. It is worth noting that R4 zoning is approved right now on this site in PUD 1389. We disagree on how it should be calculated. The PUD itself says R4 without any limitations. There's an exhibit in back that says it's limited to 20 dwelling units an acre. So for argument's sake, we'll go with their interpretation and call it 20 units an acre. That comes to 384, or excuse me, 381 units of developable apartments right now, but broken up into two projects. What we're willing to stipulate is that we will limit the number of units to 381, the exact unit count that they have right now. Except what we have is a much better product. It'll be one product. We're building lakes, we're providing a walkable community, we're putting the commercial in front of it so you could have a neighbor at Starbucks, a neighbor at coffee shop, something like that. So we think what we have is a much better product than was previously approved. We do have slightly more density in the single-family portion, and I'm going to allow Richard to explain why. What we gain in density, we, we make up for tenfold in open space, common areas, splash pads, and walkability. We think what we have is a truly unique neighborhood. We think it's going to be one that will be a significant tax catcher for the Yukon. It's just north of us. We believe that with the commercial we're going to provide, that'll be a very good thing for the city, for this ward. In addition, rather than doing your typical strip retail, what we have committed to is to do a community commercial district. So we'll have a series of buildings, all walkable, landscaping throughout. And I do think it's important to look at the types of housing product that is proposed. What you'll see through here is a mix of homes that Richard and his group spent a lot of time refining. They've pushed that garage back, they've brought a front porch out, and so it's, it's what this Planning Commission asks developers to do. The code doesn't allow us to do it. We have to file a PUD and modify setbacks, but we think what it creates is a, a nice community that is a walkable community. It brings people out to that front porch rather than in their garage, door shut, inside for the rest of the day. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Richard, let him talk about the community that they envisioned.
Got to pull this microphone down. Richard McCowen, 4409 Cannon Drive in Norman. Really glad to be here today. I need to pull the easel back a bit so I can see it. We are really excited about this particular tract of land. Just a few short weeks ago, we were here in front of you with another piece, another PUD that's in the southwest part of the city, and it really didn't have an opportunity for neighborhood retail. It sure didn't have an opportunity for, for multifamily. But in this particular location, Cemetery Road is a busy road. It's also known as Garth Brooks Boulevard in Yukon. And we've been out there building for the better part of a decade, catty corner across the street in Summers Point community. And we've, we are not the commercial developer on the corner, we've just been building the homes, the rooftops, south of Reno, and on the west side of Cemetery Road with tremendous success. It's been a really good community, and we've seen the commercial do well out there. So when we had the opportunity to take a look at this tract of land, one of the things that immediately presented itself was this major greenbelt spine that runs down the middle of the track. Sometimes those things, they're typically on every tract of land we look at, but this one really worked with us, and it broke the piece of land somewhat in half. And what we always try and do is create our amenity series as close to the center of the community as possible. That magical quarter-mile walkable distance that we've heard Jeff Speck talk about a lot has been, we found it to be totally true. You know, if we build the splash pad, the soccer field, the playground set here in the center of the community, and particularly if we do a good job, you know, creating the road network pattern where people have a habit of driving by and they've got those lines of sight onto those amenity sets, it creates a gathering place and somewhere for people to comfortably go to, meet their neighbors, and begin to build a kind of community that has actual lasting value. If we build houses and they're commodities, you say, "Well, it's a 1,400-square-foot house," and all 1,400-square-foot houses are created equal, that's hard to compete with. We have other developers and builders here in the community that they build commodity, they don't build community, they don't put in amenities, they don't put in walking trails, and they're the low-cost provider. That's not what we do. We're not about that. It's a lose-lose situation to get into being the low-cost provider. Our smallest house we build, which you all know about, 1,000 square feet, it's over $125 a square foot. It is not the low-cost option. It's a very highly-appointed house. Comes with granite countertops. It's really nice. There's a lot of single people today. In fact, 27% of the households in America are one-person households. We sell that house, it's not the best seller. We sell it a lot to people who lost a spouse, find themselves, you know, just single, want to have a homeownership, want to build equity. It's a, it's a great house, and we're, I'm incredibly proud of it. It's one of our cutest houses. You know, that garage is tucked back, and it has three different front porch options. Anyway, I'm incredibly excited also about this community is that the multifamily PUD is not speculative. This is the Owasso Land Trust. Also, it's a division of Simmons Homes. Simmons Homes is a homebuilding group out of Tulsa. We've known them for a number of years. When we were doing the Extreme Home Makeover House in Slaughtersville, at the same time they were working with the Extreme Home Makeover guys in Tulsa, they ended up doing three houses with Extreme Home Makeovers. We really got to know them well. Trying to build a house in a week is, is in a snowstorm and mud, it's a war story. So we've, we've got to know them over the years. And then we found ourselves in Stillwater working side by side. Some, the last three photographs in your package, or at least there's three photographs of their multifamily product. I believe the exact name of it is Five Points, but it's in the Trading Heights neighborhood in Stillwater. The land seller actually put us in a room together. And my dad knows the guys, knows Greg Simmons really well. And it took us a few minutes to figure out that, you know, he and I had, you know, that I'm my dad's son, and that we, we had already working together, and we like each other's product. And so we really went to work trying to design this in a collaborative way, a shared amenity. We have a long history of walling things off, of saying, "Oh, that's multifamily, so let's put up a wall around it, keep it contained," and then we have like a really nice amenity just over, over that, over that wall. And we like these guys well enough, and we have enough confidence in their product and their, their history as an Oklahoma company, that we said, "Well, let's, let's develop this central piece with these walking trails and this big pond as one thing, and let's share the cost, we'll break it out, your portion and so on of the, the detention and so on, and we'll engineer it and design it together as one central idea." And I, I know that these are future customers, you know? I, I think it was said earlier that, you know, everybody that lives in apartments commits lots of crimes and all that. I, I can't remember the crimes I committed when I lived in apartments. I, I lived in them a long, long time. Probably crimes of the heart. Anyway, I, I, I think, I think this is going to be a fabulous community, where we build something that's truly integrated, that, that weaves together a multiple series of ideas. I suppose last I should talk about the retail and the multifamily. I'm sorry, the retail and the commercial down here at the corner. Again, we have a long history of, you know, we've all seen the slide where, you know, the cul-de-sac house that backs up to the 10-acre commercial retail, and there's a six-foot stockade fence, and you have to drive all the way out of the neighborhood and back down the section line road and back up and over and in. And we have found, in fact, I live in one of those neighborhoods, and, and I didn't design it. It was, it was that way when I got there. And I wish I could go back and punch a street through so that we could connect, so that that commercial, when I get the snow cone stand and the ice cream store and the neighborhood bar, that I could, you know, could just walk and meet a friend for a beer and, and have a good time and walk home. One of the reasons that we strategically located the Empty Nestor Active Adult Focus Group here was they're the most avid walkers. And I, I really envision a neighborhood bar out here on this water feature, and that's a pretty good-sized pond. And I could see this becoming a really great gathering place. We also did want to make provision in case there was a possibility for grocery store. And then after one of our meetings with Commissioner Williams, he, he suggested that we make it easier for these guys to get down to the commercial. We did have the entry kind of way off over here in the distance. The gated piece is complex, so this was the best I could do, pulling the entry further to the west, certainly illustrating that there's a great walking path. We'll landscape that beautifully and make it a very hospitable place to go, but it is just a simple right turn and a right turn. The other connectivity through the townhouse community comes right down into this bit of allowed commercial. And so you can really move through the neighborhood without having to spill out onto the section line road. It doesn't have everything of traditional neighborhood design, but it has a ton of it. And it, and you know, the details about allowing the front porches, and you get closer and closer to your neighbors walking by, the interconnectivity, the pedestrian paths. I'm excited about this neighborhood. It's the most excited-about-a-single-family suburban community I've, I've worked on in a while. It has almost 15 and a half acres of open space. We stole part of that out of the backs of these lots. The lots in this northern track in the orange, they're 5,750 square feet. They're 250 square feet short of R1 that works out to an acre. I, I want that acre in the common area. It's really useful to us in the common area. We stole an acre, 1.8 acres, out of this, out of these backyards. We stole 500 square feet out of these backyards, put it in the common area. And we stole, stole a total of .7 out of this and put it in the common area. Does the project get diminished if it's only 13 or so acres of common area versus 15 and a half? Yeah, it does. It matters. There's a lot of trees out there, they're worth keeping. It's, trees are magical. They're rare over in this side of town. They provide shade, they protect you from the wind. They can do a lot of things to promote walkability. You know, we know the walk, the pedestrian is a very fragile creature. And so I'm proud of this. I'm, I'm excited to get to work with the Owasso Land Trust. Again, there's some technical issues. The neighbors, we, we ended up negotiating in the outside, would like us to make some commitments about minimum square footages. And when we were working with staff, there was some logic in just reducing the number of tracks and just making all of the single-family Track 4 just one large track. And the neighbors have said they'd like some assurances in terms of minimum square footages. That's very easy to accomplish if, if you'd allow us to put back a separation, you know, Track 4 and 5, and split it right here and make 1,400 square-foot minimum here and a 1,000 square-foot minimum over here. And these down here would be in a 1,500 square-foot minimum. And we, we can, we can do that, and this would be 1,400 square-foot minimum per side on the townhomes. There are other technical problems in terms of, you know, water and traffic, civil engineering stuff. You all know me, I'm not a civil engineer. We'll solve those problems. Excited about it and happy to answer any questions.
Questions before we hear from the people who signed up? Okay, thank you.
I, I do need to address the modifications that we needed to make as to why we request the continuance, so that they're on the record. This is all going to be within Track 2, which is the multifamily tract. Our setbacks for the multifamily development, we need a 15-foot setback as it abuts residential, a five-foot setback as it abuts the pond, common area, and commercial. We also need to add in Track 2, define our maximum height at 45 feet. And then we need to add a phrase in Section 9.1. That reads, if you look at 9.1, it deals with facade, after the, this would be starting in the third sentence, the minimum 70% of the first floor, that of the first floor needs to apply to our, to the entire language. It was initially in there and got deleted inadvertently. So I think those are all the technical issues. I do want just to note the TEs real quick. One of the things that Richard is excited about is the ability to have a neighborhood-type bar. So we would ask that that use be kept in. We would be willing to limit the number of bars, but that's, that's part of the whole, you know, community concept. It's not foreign to this city. We have community bars a lot. Signs shall not exceed eight feet in height. What we would ask for is 15 feet. There would be a monument-type sign, but we would ask for 15-foot signs. And then it is important to note that the protest petition that you all received today talks about the dwellings in Track 5 of the old PUD would basically be a nursing home. That, that is not accurate. R4 is permitted. It could be a standard R4 multifamily project. It is not limited to a nursing home. The way that the old PUD worked is it added additional permitted uses, but did not limit it to those. So with that, we behalf of answering any questions. Chris Anderson is here. We know water has been brought up, but he can speak to the water issue and another development right by here. That, they didn't have water issues.
So, David, you're saying actually you agree with all the TEs except number three? You'd like to have a fifteen-foot sign opposed to an eight-foot sign?
Correct. And then we'd ask number two be deleted.
Okay, thank you.
Keeping number two in will not eliminate the ability to have a ABC three use. You just have to come back and get an ABC three overlay from the commission and the council.
Would it be possible to ask for, just to limit it to three? No, I don't want to be bricktown with thirty-two, you know? That's, I get that.
It's unlimited right now if you...
Okay. Well, he says we have to come back when we're ready to build a bar. That'd be fine. So, so yes. And we'll come back at the time that we're ready for that user. All right, thank you.
Okay. We'll hear from the people who signed up, and I'll just call your names in the order in which I have the signup sheets. While Mr. Cross is coming up, I'm going to ask for the other people as I call your names. If you have something new to add, please don't repeat what the people who have spoken before you have told us. In other words, if six people talk about traffic, we're, we're going to know it the first time we've heard it. And can we take this down so I can see the rest of the... When everybody smiles, I want to be able to see them. Mr. Cross, if you give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, James Cross. My address is 609 Shamrock Circle. I think many of the comments that I have prepared are going to be addressed probably more effectively and more in-depth by some others, so I'm going to limit my comments to just a couple of things. In, in looking at the, um, when I look at Oklahoma City's planned use development program, part of the purpose of it is to evaluate growth potential on an area before we actually start seeing population changes and structure changes. If an existing planned use development, or if a proposed development fits well with the other surrounding PUDs in terms of similarities in population density or types of allowable structures, classifications and types of commercial occupancies, that sort of thing. It allows for more complete and more compatible blending of the community. It takes some of the reactionary planning for things like fire suppression services and that sort of thing. It kind of allows for a little bit of planning and a little bit of controlled growth, if you will, a little bit of thoughtfulness into how things are put together. And the, one of the reasons that, that I personally have some issues with this project as it's being proposed, I mean, it is a nice development on paper. There are some nice attributes here. There certainly are plenty of, of positive things, but if you look at the, you know, we hear that the existing zoning already allows for this and this and this and this. Well, then go ahead and do your project with that existing zoning. Why change the zoning? Well, it seems to be based on putting a lot of density, adding a lot of density to the homes that are going in, the number of homes. So, that impacts, you know, the, Oklahoma City already has a schedule in place for improving the, the pumping stations for the water. There's already plans, there's already things out there in the works for when the streets are going to be developed and this sort of thing. And it seems to me that this is, is pretty much the focus is this is what we want to do, and it's here. And I don't think this PUD really fits that well with everything else that's going on in the neighborhood. When you look at the surroundings, there's not this much density. There's, you know, there's some issues here with coming in, you know, put the apartment complex in. I, I think there's just some, some opportunity here that needs to be taken to, to look at how this PUD actually fits in with the overall, the overall plan. There are a couple of things that I had written down. I just realized that someone else is going to speak to it, so I'll limit my part of it to that because the other issues are going to be coming up.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Do I need to repeat my address? Okay. Kimberly Heaton, 601 Shamrock Circle. Thanks for letting us comment today. A lot of the things we've heard about changes made today, we've heard for the first time. I can speak to what I've seen at the presentation that was given to us by the developer last weekend, and also to the plans that are currently on file with the commission, which we have through the, through the week, waited to see if any changes were proposed or made or a continuance was requested. When we attended the meeting last weekend, we saw the same presentation that you just saw. We saw the same chart that you just saw. And we're concerned, it's, it's like Mr. Cross just stated, it's not that there aren't some good things about the project they're proposing, but the sheer density of the population that they want to pack into that property that's now used as farmland and has never been developed in accordance with the prior PUD, it, it is very concerning to us. Not only to the density of it and the effect that it's going to have on the traffic on Cemetery Road, which we've already talked to you about before, how difficult that is and dangerous at times. It's going to have effect on our water pressure. We've already talked to you about that. There's another neighborhood here today that have representatives here today that we found out last night, when they heard about what was going on, they came over and talked to us and said, "What's going on? Because we, we've heard something and we know you're doing petitions." And we told them where the plans were, and we told them what we knew about it. And they said they have the very same water issues in their neighborhoods, and there are three of them. There are hundreds of homes across the street from this development in addition to our neighborhood, which borders immediately to the north, yes, the north, of the property at issue. The, the proposal is for hundreds of homes, very small, 1,000 square feet to 1,400 square feet. There's no way to know how many of each. Potentially, we could have 1,000-square-foot houses on 4,000-square-foot pieces of property, lining from our entrance into our neighborhood, the other side of where I live, there are no homes. It's just an entrance road in. And they're proposing lining all that road and up Fifth Street, where all of our residents live, all the way back to the back of our property, with 1,000-square-foot to 1,400-square-foot homes. That's concerning to us. We, we discussed those concerns with them. We discussed the concerns about the water. They didn't agree with us. They don't think there are water pressure issues in the neighborhood. I, I do believe that we're in a little bit better position to know that because we're the ones, when we turn our faucets on, sometimes the water doesn't come out. And they've tried booster stations and they, and they're, but the problem is the pipe that feeds western Oklahoma City is not big enough. It's just not big enough, and they don't have it far enough out yet to help us. It's still somewhere down around Mustang Road. That's what we've been told. There are other people from our neighborhood that'll give you the specifics because they've talked to the city about that issue. They've also talked to them about the traffic issues. We asked them what they would do about this. They said they would consider it. They'd take it under consideration, they would talk to their engineers, they would try to figure it out. They weren't aware that was, there was such a severe issue with traffic and water, and that they would, they would work with us to try to get these resolved. We made it clear at the meeting that we want to see them resolved before rezoning is approved, before we put potentially 900 more dwelling units in this property. That concerns us to, to approve it first and then deal with it later. We're asking that this planning commission not deal with it later. Look at it upfront and consider the impact on us of this many new families on that piece of property, on that corner of Reno and Cemetery Road, because it's going to have a real effect on us. And these issues that we raised in the petition, they have a real effect on us every day. And we're asking for you to consider that. We also, we've tried to resolve, talked intermittently through the week. We talked some today outside, but still can't come to an agreement that we, we can all live with. We're, we're concerned about school districts and how will they absorb that number of people? We're, we're still concerned because of the commercial. They described the commercial to us at the meeting, but they, I don't remember a bar being discussed on the corner of the street that I live on. I don't remember another grocery store. And that's concerning to me because that'll bring population into that area, and we just got a grocery store a half mile to the other side of us out there. The development out there is significantly increasing. All four neighborhoods that signed petitions, ours and the three others, are still developing. They're not completed yet. I don't believe any of them are completed. I know three of them aren't. And so, it's not finished yet. And already, the resources in west Oklahoma City are becoming strained, and they can't handle much more. And, and so, we're requesting that you deal with that ahead of time and try and help prevent development that puts it over the top, and then we try to deal with it later when none of us have water or the traffic issues are so difficult, or our quality of life isn't the same. We all have a significant investment in our homes in these neighborhoods. They're nice homes, most of them over 2,000 square foot, but if they're not over, they're closed. They're 1,850 to 2,400, 2,500. Across the street, probably, I'm going to guess, just from looking, about 1,800 square feet to, some of them look to be about 2,800, 2,900 square feet. They're on large properties. They're well landscaped. It's a pretty area. It's quiet. It's a wonderful place to raise a family. And we want to see that preserved, and we also are concerned about our property values if it's not. And if we can pack all these people into this property and we put homes that back up to our street that are half the size of ours, what's that going to do to our property value? What's that going to do to our investment? So, we appreciate your consideration, and we're asking you to please consider this and make your decision. And we're asking you to, to please deny the request and the application to rezone. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Leonard Moots.
Sorry.
That's all right. I live at 12804 Northwest Fifth Street, on the south edge of the Shirely Development that's immediately to the north of this PUD. So, my house would back up to the northern edge of those homes. First, I'd like to rebut a little bit on what Mr. Box said about the...
Sir, just to address us.
Okay. On the dwelling units in the existing PUD, I calculated it from dwelling units per acre that's shown on the plot map, and I counted the lots on the plot map. Existing PUD 1389 would have about 692 dwelling units. There are two R4 marked areas on that PUD. One of those is drawn as a nursing home and says as the things that could be added to the R4 coding, a nursing home. So, it looks to me...
Sir?
I can only read what I see in writing, so it looked to me like it was 692 dwelling units. The density they're talking about here is close to 1,000 dwelling units in this...
Okay. We've, we've heard about density, so we need to hear something new, sir.
So, I wanted to rebut that. Water supplies, I've talked to the water department. They have been accelerating, bringing the water main expansion out to the west end of Oklahoma City. They are probably 15 to 18 months from having the 48-inch main that runs from Stanley Draper to Council Road in Reno, and the 30-inch main then that runs from, from Council Road down Reno to the west end, to the area just west of Cemetery Road. That's 15 to 18 months out. That will help water availability in that area. The full water problem won't be solved until they also upgrade the pumping station at Reno and Mustang Road, and that's probably another... It was a little, that was a little bit looser on the timing on that, but it's probably within about two years. So, we're, you know, we're a couple of years away from, from really taking care of the water issues. And then lastly, I want to say as a homeowner with a 2,100-square-foot home that backs up to this property, now I've heard David say that we're going to have a, a 1,400-square-foot home minimum behind me. I think that's going to adversely affect the value of my property and the other properties on Northwest Fifth Street. So, I encourage the committee to turn this PUD down.
Thank you. Dino Foot.
I'm a liberal.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon. I appreciate your, to, to listen to my complaint about this development.
Give us your name and address for the record, Mr. Sawyer.
Okay. My name is Dan Sawyer. I live at 500 Land Run Lane. I live in Settlers Ridge Edition, which is across the street on Cemetery Road from this addition.
Good, thank you.
At this time, I've been living in this area since September of 2008, through many redesigns and applies for PUDs and, and uncertainty of what our neighborhood's going to look like. At this time, I do not agree with this design. It is not even close to our neighborhood that we have now. I believe the impact of doing something like this will decline the value of our homes to our area and to my neighbors. Currently, right now, I'd like to ask for an eight-week delay. I'd like to consult with Grove and Associates and attorney and see what we can do to address this problem.
Thank you.
Hi. Ginger Halsred, 509 Land Run Lane in Settlers Ridge across Cemetery Road. I am concerned with the, like a previous, on 89th Street, the broad spectrum of uses with commercial development. It lists pretty much anything you would want to add in there. Currently, the two neighborhoods on Cemetery Road are single-family homes, no multifamily. I'm a Realtor, so I have numbers for you. Shirely is 2,000 to 2,500 square feet, and the homes in Settlers Ridge are 2,200 to 3,200 square feet. So, we're paying $200,000 plus for, for homes in those neighborhoods. The nearest apartment complex is two miles away, so we are not in a neighborhood where that's common. And with the lower-priced homes in the real estate industry, we've experienced an increase in cash buyers as investors. Doesn't have to necessarily be cash, but investors as a whole and properties of, you know, I've kind of calculated out, 100, 250,000, maybe 175,000 are going to have an increase in people that are not owner occupants. They're going to be more into the, it's going to be some owner occupants, but it's also going to attract some investors. So, that is also a concern. School district, having a child in the school district and an officer of the PSO, we've already, we are already at capacity. We've added teachers to every single grade already. The current elementary school, which is the only one I can speak to, is at capacity right now. If you were to add 900 more units, that's sure to be either needing another school or expansion of school, which would be something that would need to be addressed with the school district. And I represented Settlers Ridge. We, they were informed, we were informed of this yesterday afternoon, and the petitions went out at 6 o'clock last night and we got 150 signatures, so I'm sure we could get some more if we had some more time. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
That's all who've signed up?
I want to make just a, a quick point, and I know Nathan's here on the water issue and can address it once I'm, I'm done. But Mr. Cross asked a great question. Why are they having to rezone if multifamily is already allowed? That is a great question. The reason why is that the PUD in place now puts the multifamily down here on the arterial and then right here. It would not allow us to centralize it, build a lake, have this, this great common area. So, that's why we're having to go and rezone it, the way it is located. But we are confident that the water issue will be resolved, and I'll allow Nathan to tell you why.
Nathan Maddenwald with the Utilities Department. What Mr. Butts said is fairly accurate, except we're under contract to do the 30-inch water main all the way to the corner of Cemetery. And Reno will word the last contract for that extension on this next aqua docket. So we still would be talking out for construction of all the permits to get here till middle of next year, so like summer of next year.
So roughly 14, 15 months?
About 12 months.
12 months?
Yeah.
For construction?
Mm-hmm. We also do have to do the booster stations, but what we've got in place now is we've put temporary pumps adjacent to the booster station so we can transfer the water. Our modeling shows that the key component of it is the pipeline right now. That's the main thing we have to complete.
How long to the developer? How long will it be before you have a house ready to be attached to the water? Hooked up to the water?
We would be... If we started construction right now, we would probably be about 14 months at the fastest if we... I mean, literally, if we started construction right now. More realistically, it is about 18 months before we'd have the first home ready to move in if everything went well. We haven't dove into engineering.
So this is really happening about simultaneously? So it wouldn't have an adverse effect on the present condition?
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Can we get traffic in here? I'd like to hear about some of the plans out there.
Stuart, back there?
Richard, David while they're coming, a couple of questions I had, and I may have some additional. You've shown us some photographs of some existing apartments that were built by the Owasso Group. I believe in our photograph pack, these three-story units right here, right?
Yes, sir.
Now, is that what you intend to build?
Yes, that is correct. They may choose a slightly different paint color, but other than that, it's those specific apartment.
And then these are the elevations that you'd intend for the R4? I guess? Yeah?
Yes.
Okay. And then the other pictures are exemplary, not homes, that we would expect, right? Is that fair to say?
Yes, very fair.
These are located where, did you say, Richard?
We have photographs, mostly they're from Stillwater Community, but they're typical of these series of homes we built throughout the Oklahoma City metro. It happened to be a beautiful day, and, you know, it had just rained and the grass was green, and I took a lot of photos.
But... So the four, five issue, right? So track four, you had... Does that map reflect this, or does that map reflect four and five?
It reflects four and five, the commitments that we made, the neighbors to...
Okay. I get it. All right. So now, up there in the orange, that is what, five? What number is that now? Four?
It'll be four.
That's four, and that... Those lots are how big?
Just under 6,000. They're about 5,800.
5,800? And then the yellow then is the 6,000, our standard R1 size, right?
These would be 5,500.
5,500?
So we... Over the weekend, what...
Yeah.
Different from what we looked at on Saturday, Wednesday. I stretched all these to 115-foot deep, shrunk these to 110, made all those adjustments. Still okay. But...
And then the blue are the standard R1?
And that's a gated?
Gated.
Those also are 5,750 square feet. They're...
Okay.
None of them are exact...
Yeah.
Precisely 6,000 square feet.
All right. Thanks.
Question?
Yeah, just like to hear kinda what the plans are out in this area to deal with streets and that sort of thing.
The plan is for Reno is part of the 2007 geobond issue to be widened. I don't know a timeline on that. We'd have to check with Public Works and see when that would be sold. But it will widen from Cemetery to Check Hall, and that includes the intersections. North Cemetery Road is actually State Highway 92 in that area, so it's not ours to widen. I was checking back there on the ODOT plans. I've been able to find anything yet, but I'll look if they have any plans for that section of road.
So what you're saying is there... You can't find any plans for 92 at this time? And for Reno, there is a plan, but it hasn't... We haven't sold the bond?
We haven't sold the bond.
And typically, from the time we do that till the time we start or finish a project, what's that look like? And I know it's not exact. Just curious.
I would think you're still... The minimum's still three years out if it's sold today.
Okay.
Wanted David, one... I don't know which one wants to answer this, but you're saying it's gonna... To develop the property, it's gonna take you 14 to 18 months?
First time.
Okay. What is the build-out? What's your build-out projection?
A lot of that has to do with market conditions.
I understand.
And we... In this neighborhood, because it has homes at different price points, there's a good chance we'll use somewhere close to 25 to 30 acres per year. There's a good chance, historically, these things, you know, somewhere between eight to 10 years. If the market's really good, it could go as fast as eight. Maybe more typical that it stretch on into 12. My dad's got a 320-acre neighborhood that turned over 30 years old this year, and there's still 100 acres left to go. So it's... I think this one should be about 10 years, and it should be complete.
So, you know, I think it's significant that, you know, this thing's not gonna happen overnight. It's gonna be, you know, it's gonna be several years. And we've got projects, we got water projects going, we've got road improvements going, so interstructure is going out that way. And, you know, I think that's a significant point here as well, so...
I'm probably not the best person to speak to this, but one of the things that I represented to the neighborhood group on Saturday is many times water pressure issues, just when we bring a new neighborhood and bring a loop, and now you can be feeding the neighborhood to the north, for example, from a couple of different directions, very often, it improves things, the fact that we showed up and started laying lines. And I'm... I think my finest civil engineer, and I know, is here, probably talked about it in great detail, but I'm... We wanna be good neighbors here. We're not trying to come and steal the last drop of water by any means.
Richard? Richard, one quick question. Do you have any other developments going around this area? Who's 14... 1427?
Currently, we are buying lots from 1427. And those lots are actually tiny. I apologize. I didn't put in that neighborhood, and I should know the exact dimension of them. They're really small homes. But we've done very well there. That's a maintenance-provided community called Springs at Settlers Ridge. We're down to 17 unsold lots, and so it...
Maybe I missed it. Do you remember what size home that you're putting in?
Yes, I can answer that. Those homes range from 1,500 square feet to 2,092 square feet.
And your maximum here is from 1,000 to 1,400? Is that what you said? In your development?
This group right here on the east boundary, it ranges from 1,000 up to 17... Pardon me. Up to 1,708 square feet.
Okay.
The average of these, and we've got these neighborhoods going in the Edmund area, Deer Creek area, the average is 1,400 square feet and going up. Just as long as interest rates are reasonable, people choose larger ones.
Okay.
This group of homes, the average home size is about 1,700 square feet.
Okay.
The smallest one in that group is 1,400 square feet, and they go up from there. The average sales price... The range of prices is 162,000 up to 200,000. Over here, the range in prices from 130,000 to 170,000. And then as we get down into these maintenance-provided homes in the gated community, it's 175,000 to 200,000 is the price ranges.
And the size of those gated?
The size in here is 1,500 square feet up to 2,090.
Okay. Thank you.
Ginger Halsred, 509 Land Run Lane. To expound upon that, we've asked for exact numbers of square footage. In our meeting outside, he said 1,000 to 1,700. He did say... He did not say an average of 1,700. He said a maximum of 1,700. So we would like that in writing before we would...
Well...
Decide upon that, because there is a big range difference there, so...
The square footage of the houses is actually not our purview. We can't ask them to do that or direct them to do that.
We would just like clarification of the exact... It's different from what we were told.
We've just heard the same thing you have, and that's all we have to go by. Commissioners? Discussion? Action?
There's four TEs on this? Is that four technically? And you want to delete two?
No, we're gonna go and keep it. We have to come back with an ABC3 when we're ready to put that bar in. We're fine with the TEs except for...
Three?
Three. We'd like 15 rather than eight. But we just stipulate that they're all monument signs.
Okay. I just want to clarify.
Well, my concerns in being someone that lives out in this area is I will admit, I like the development. I like the concept. I liked it when we saw it at the last one you did. I think... I just think overall, the concept is a very good one. And it accomplishes what the city's trying to accomplish in many areas. My concerns are the same as the people have brought up. We have traffic issues there, and we have water issues there, and there's no denying it, okay? Now, it sounds like we do have some plans to address those issues in the future. They're not addressed currently. Now, and the question... And the million-dollar question is always, how far in the future? You know? And obviously, this is, like was mentioned, this is not gonna develop overnight. We know that. We see developments all around us. I mean, the developments you guys live in are not full, and I don't know how long they've been there, probably several years. So it takes a length of time, obviously, to fill these developments up. But I still share the same concern with traffic and water. And it's always a dilemma we run into, you know, with the chicken and the egg or the cart and the horse, the old, you know, sayings. And so I'm, you know, I'm still... I'm torn about this, just like I think some of you are. I, like I said, I like the concept. I'd like to have this in our area because I think it will bring a lot to our area, especially where it is. I mean, it's not far off of a real, a major... Well, it's become a major commercial hub right there at Reno and 10th Street and I-40 right there. So I think... I don't think this is completely out of place. I think that this is probably a good location for this. I, like I said, would like to see some attention paid to the traffic and the water issues, and I do think we are dealing with that. And I do think the city, in my conversations with the people at the city, that this is definitely on their radar screen, and they are doing some things and making plans to address the problems that we have out there that I share with you. So I understand the concerns there. With that in mind, I'm going to recommend approval for this.
Second?
Changing the height on TE3.
Height on TE, was it three?
Number two. Number three. Three.
Three. And we were going to what height?
Fifteen feet.
Fifteen feet.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 24, remending the sign height to 15 feet. Cast your votes. It's approved. Thank you.
We're on item 27 now. ED 207 to dedicate public streets in the Arbor Lake Edition located east of Pennsylvania and southwest of 104th Street.
My name is Roger Waddell. I live at 11136 Arbor Lake Drive. And we are here to ask that we dedicate our two streets to the city.
Well, Mr. Waddell, this is one of my favorite topics, because I don't understand why the city ever wants to take streets back once they're private, because the city just winds up assuming an obligation that belonged to you before.
Well...
And the city seems to do this from time to time. I think it makes absolutely no fiscal or practical sense, but that's just one person. Commissioners? No one signed up, obviously.
Do you want to hear?
Could you give us a little background? Give us a little background.
This neighborhood was plotted in 2002, and that developer built two or three homes that was going to be a gated community. And he went bankrupt. And it was... It sat there for a while and was taken over by another developer who developed it without the intention of the streets being private, but never did anything about it. We came to the Streets and Planning Commission to see what we could do to get the streets taken over by the city, because we are a small neighborhood of just 46 homes. And we were told, you know, what to do. Fortunately, our streets were built to city standards back in 2002. They wanted us to make some repairs to them because after 10 years or so, they'd had, you know, deteriorated to some somewhat. So we had roughly a little over $16,000 worth of repairs made to the streets. And the street department has said that they are acceptable to them now in the condition that they're in. And so since our neighborhood is never going to be private as the original developer had intended, we're coming to you to ask you to take them as part of the city system.
Well, to approve this, you need to approve the variance to TE2, Commissioners?
Well, I don't... And I certainly see John, I see your point. I just... I'm not... It's not a very big area. It's not... Streets aren't all that long.
We have roughly a half a mile of streets. Less than half a mile.
They have consulted with city staff. They have made repairs as requested. And, you know, in my personal opinion, although I agree on some applications, they're not... It's not acceptable on this one in particular. I don't see any major issues, other than I know that the city's gonna be burdened with this. It's just not that much. And so I could move approval of the variance.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 27... Oh, variant first. Okay. Motion and second to approve the variance. Cast your votes.
I would move approval of the application.
Motion and second to approve item 27. Cast your votes. And it's approved.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Item 28 is C6609, final plat of Brookstone Villas Phase 1, located west of Sarah Road and south of southwest 29th Street.
Good afternoon. Jason Spencer with Craft and Toll on behalf of the applicant. What we've got is the final plat for the first phase of Brookstone Villas, 49 lots on 10 acres. The final plat conforms to the approved preliminary plat. Staff has recommended approval, and we're in agreement with all the TEs. We do request a variance per TE number three relating to access. The current plan is to develop this phase along with Phase 2, which is the next item on agenda together. And if they're developed together, that phase will provide the secondary means of access, and we will not need the variance. But however, just to leave the flexibility in case something happens and two phases are not developed together, we'd like to request a variance and to allow for the access. access. And we also propose a temporary emergency access road to the east that would connect on the Sarah. We've sent this plan over to the fire marshal. They did not have any objection to it. So we'd ask for your approval of that variance.
No one signed up, commissioners?
I move for approval with the variance change there to allow for the emergency access to Sarah.
All right, so the motion is to approve the variance first?
Yeah, I'm sorry. For the variance, yeah.
Cast your votes. Oops. Variance is approved.
And I move for approval of the application.
Adding the temporary access.
Sorry.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve item twenty-eight as conditioned. Cast your votes. And that's approved.
And item twenty-nine is a final plat of Brookstone Villas Phase Two, same location.
So this is the second piece of the puzzle that we just discussed, and on it, we've got thirty-one lots on seven acres. This plat also conforms with the approved preliminary plat. And we would ask that TE number three concerning the acceptance of Phase One improvements be deleted, and we would ask for variance for access on this one as well, for this old chance that it's not developed together with Phase One. We have thirty-one lots, so we're one lot over, so we'd ask for variance on access on that one as well.
How are you going to provide for emergency access there if you need it?
Right now, what we would be willing to agree to is, is to limit the number of occupancy permits to thirty, so that we would meet the access requirements. And at the time Phase One is completed, we would then get that extra lot added on there, if that's agreeable.
Can we do that?
Well, we can do that. You'd be having the emergency access from Phase One running through Phase Two.
Right.
Right. And if he's willing to limit it to thirty lots.
Okay.
So what about the amenities, though? I didn't understand that. Seems like we skipped over that part pretty fast.
I think there was some confusion on the amenities. We did submit a letter correcting this, and they're proposing the amenities be constructed in the common area, which kind of splits between the two phases, before there's any build out of more than thirty lots.
In either phase or in both combined?
It's combined.
Okay. Makes sense to me.
And that's the letter the staff has?
Yes.
Thank you, staff. No one signed up.
So what do we need motions for here?
Berden? I think you need to delete TE three-
Okay.
And add a TE requiring the emergency access until no more than thirty lots in Phase Two are completed.
Yes.
Make a motion with what he just said.
Okay, we have a motion on deleting-
We need to delete four now? We've clarified, delete four. Okay. All right, got it.
No, we don't need to delete four. He's provided the letter which clarifies, so that's okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve item twenty-nine as conditioned. Cast your votes. And it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item thirty is C sixty-six sixteen, final plat of Williamson Farms Edition, Section Eight, located west of Meridian Avenue and south of southwest one hundred and nineteenth Street.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Chris Anderson with SMC Consulting Engineers representing the developer. We have read the staff report and agree with the TEs. On this particular one, there is a variance request for a number of lots, and it's due to the intersection of southwest one hundred and thirtieth Street and Williamson Farms Road. The lots back west of that intersection, I think I have thirty-five or thirty-six lots, and that's what that request, that variance is for.
I want to look at the three plat, I want to look at the three sections together for a minute, Chris.
Okay. And we'll point out that, as you can tell, that all three of these plats were turned in, and seven was approved a couple of weeks ago. Talking with the developer this morning, he's pretty sure that these are all pretty much going to be constructed at the same time.
Okay. Were there various TE three, commissioners? Have you discussed this with the fire?
I did not get a chance to talk it with them. Kind of broke the plat there where it made sense, you know, engineering-wise. I didn't see a good place to cut five lots off of that cul-de-sac that really makes sense, but.
Well, items thirty and thirty-two are contiguous, if that helps anybody looking at this.
If no protests, I move a variance on TE number three.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the variance to TE three and item thirty. Cast your votes. That's approved. Do we get a second? I didn't hear. Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve item thirty. Cast your votes. That's approved.
And item thirty-one is C sixty-six seventeen, Section Nine of the same addition.
And Chris Anderson, SMC representing the developer. We have read the staff report and agree with the TEs.
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve item thirty-one. Cast your votes. That's approved.
Item thirty-two is C sixty-six eighteen, Section Ten of the same addition.
And Chris Anderson of SMC representing the developer. We have read the staff report and agree with the TEs.
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve item thirty-two. Cast your votes. That's approved. Thank you.
Item thirty-three is C sixty-six twenty-one, final plat of Legacy Estates One, located west of Council Road and south of Wilshire Boulevard.
Keith Beatty with Ishen Associates, representing the applicant. Will you agree to meet all the TEs in the staff report? And we'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
Okay. No one signed up, commissioners? We have a motion and a second to approve item thirty-three. Cast your votes. And you're approved.
Item thirty-four is C sixty-six twenty, final plat of Elmhurst Court, located north of Wilshire Boulevard and east of May Avenue.
Mark Grubbs, Grubbs Consulting on behalf of the applicant. We agree with all the TEs. The final plat conforms to the approved preliminary plat, and we ask for your approval.
Commissioner, no one signed up?
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve item thirty-four. Cast your votes. That's approved.
Item thirty-five is PUD fifteen thirty-eight to rezone thirteen thousand North Mustang Road from PUD fourteen sixty-four to PUD fifteen thirty-eight.
Good afternoon. Kendall Dillon with Craft and Toll, representing the applicant. This is a rezoning application for seventy-five acres located at the southeast corner of Memorial Road and Mustang Road. And this piece of property currently is part of a two-hundred-and-forty-acre preliminary plat, as well as PUD, that is entirely eight thousand single, or eight thousand square foot, single-family lot. So we feel like that it's good development, as well as planning, to provide another type of product, given that it's the magnitude and the size, two-hundred-and-forty acres. So we've taken a look at this overall, two-hundred-and-forty acres, and to us, it makes good sense to try to rezone the west portion of this, given the geometry, as well as the topography on that side. So thus, the purpose of our application. And in doing so, it also is kind of mimicking what Village Verde, I think, you see across the street with, you know, I think they have four-hundred-and-eighty acres with several different housing tops and multiple tracks. So I think that's the purpose of our application. If you look at it, our current, it isn't a PUD. We have two tracks. I think it's about fifty-three and a half acres in Track One that we're asking for single-family. We would ask that it be permitted down to a five-thousand-square-foot lot. And then in Track Two, it's roughly twenty-one acres that we would ask for R-two as well. I think if you look at it, it's completely in conformance consistent with the neighborhood, especially Village Verde. The tracks that are immediately across the street, there are, to the north is R-one, but also, as you go to the south, there's tracks there that permit quadplexes, duplexes, and some restricted multifamily as well. So I think it's in conformance, makes good sense, and we feel like it's good plan, and thus the purpose of our application. Staff's recommended approval, and we'd ask that you do the same.
No one signed up, commissioners? Nick? We have a motion and a second to approve item thirty-five. Cast your votes. That's approved.
And item thirty-six is the preliminary plat for McQuinney West.
As well as I know.
Located east of Mustang and south Memorial.
Preliminary plat, I think we have a total of a hundred and eighty-one dwelling units in regards to the TEs. On TE number four, it's a variance request for the access. This pertains to the southern portion. I think there will be a hundred and eleven units in there, but yet we've only, even though it loops on itself and we have a boulevard, the code says only up to a hundred. So what we will do is, instead of asking for the variance, whether we amend it or just delete that TE, we will provide an emergency access from, that is Bailey Circle that you see that parallels Mustang Road. We'll provide an emergency access from that back out to Mustang Road, and by doing so, that will meet your subdivision regulations. So we can do that on that TE. TE number five obviously pertains to connection between quarter sections. We are providing the stub to the south. However, what we would ask in regards to this variance is not to have the stub back to the east because of, if you notice, there's a wide common area. That is a FEMA-regulated floodplain. This is one of the primary tributaries to Deer Creek. So we've got, obviously, FEMA issues, as well as Corps of Engineers issues. There's close to five thousand CFS in that stream, so it's got a lot of water in it. So that's the purpose of that request on that variance, and we'd ask that that be granted as well. We're in agreement with all the other TEs, and we'd ask for your approval.
No one signed up, commissioners? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the variance on TE number five. Cast your votes. And the board die. In that case, we'll signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Variance is approved.
I move the application deleting TE number four. Call for emergency access will be provided.
Again, motion to approve item thirty-six, deleting TE four. Signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Thirty-six is approved.
Thank you.
Item thirty-seven is PUD fifteen twenty-nine to rezone eleven five hundred North Kelly Avenue from PUD eleven forty-three to PUD fifteen twenty-nine.
Good afternoon. David Box, five two two, call Core Drive. On behalf of the applicant, who is also with me, Mr. Cooley and Berry Lodge. Our application today is for a product that has become very popular in this city, one that's been discussed earlier today, as well as some single-family, that is the non-new product. What I have here on either side of me, to my right, is what is approved as of now within a PUD. To my left is what we are making application for. This has been revised since, I don't know if it came before Planning Commission once, but it has been revised, and part of the reason that it's been revised is, actually, the exhibit you see on the screen shows why we've revised it. I know Commissioner Williams was concerned with the lack of connectivity. So what you see now is you have connectivity through these northern tracks, whereas you can see the, kind of the middle part of Track Two didn't connect with Track Four. So we now have connectivity throughout, except for these two, which are bolded. And what these are, and the front page of what you got handed out, and staff has a copy as well, this is called the Edinburgh Edition. And this is the product that is real popular right now for aging adults. I didn't look at you. My eyes just happened to glance over there. But what you have is a real nice common area off one street, and it allows for a very nice product. We've attached pictures to this showing this particular edition, and this is the vision that we have for this. Now, it creates a unique instance where we have to get some variances to the sub-racks. What we're asking for are twenty-two feet worth of width. What you see before you in the Edinburgh Edition is actually twenty feet. So we will be slightly bigger than some of these other additions that have come forward, but it's because we just have a different product. But these are real successful. We think it's important to note that what could be built out right now is nine-hundred-and-twenty-six units. What we will have is four-hundred-and-ninety-nine, so we're almost cutting it by half. Our density will be about four-point-four, which is a, you know, obviously cutting it by halves is a significant decrease. We do think it's something that is appropriate. There was a bunch of protest initially. We know Pat Garrett, as in the past, spoke as the representative for that area, and we know Pat has now withdrawn his protest. I know that there are still some letters in your staff report, but to my knowledge, I think the protest has gone away. I'd be happy to answer any questions. The plat, which is item thirty-eight, has been continued. In our meetings with Commissioner Williams, we discussed some things like, you know, an island or roundabout up here to break up the, we only have one block length that's long, but we are going to break that up, and so thus, the purpose for thirty-eight being continued, so.
David?
Yes, sir.
My concern is this. We've got a preliminary plat proposal in front of us, which you're talking about amending, but which comes with a whole bunch of issues contained in it, as you know. And once we approve the zoning, then we're just sort of locked into, how do we maneuver within that? And before, I'd be willing to vote to rezone this, and I understand what's over here, and I understand what's over there. I'd like to see a preliminary plat that the staff and we can accept.
Well, let's talk about the plat real quick. I have the staff report, and the number of issues in the variances are just generated because of these two unique, private, developed areas. So they're not, as a whole, they just deal with paving width and things of that nature. So none of that will change. The only change you'll see is you'll see a turnabout or an island up there. So none of these technical evaluations will change, and their evaluations obviously don't deal with the zoning, so that won't change either. But it's really generated by the code not allowing for this new product that's out there, and we're going to go get with staff next week, but these have been approved all over the place, and actually for less width.
Let's do that, and let's discuss it, and come back in two weeks, then.
Well, we don't, there's nothing that will change in the PUD. There's nothing that'll change in the plat. It's just a matter of adding an island. The technical evaluation from staff won't change. We feel like we've, you know, we've met with Commissioner Williams. We've discussed it with a lot of you, and we think it's a good product, and like I said, nothing, I don't think we gained anything by pushing a PUD off.
Mr. Chairman, we spent a lot of time over the last, I think it's continued about three times, and we got it to the connectivity and the two parts where you had a Hammerhead, the two gated areas. I think that's what surrounds a lot of the variance. I was concerned with, after we got it all connected, the road on the, the road on the east side, it was just a straight drive, and I just wanted them to break that for this traffic. So I've seen the preliminary plat, and I've seen this, and it's really not any different. And in fact, I thought they was going to have a sketch on it for this meeting. But I like it because, one, they did come back and they decreased the density, they made the, the single-family houses connect. The two areas where we're talking about for the Hammerhead gated areas, it really reduced the number of R-four units. So it kind of is making, it's a unique development, and I think moving forward, this portion will not hinder the plat portion. I don't think it will be that much of an issue. And we have continued- And we have continued it a number of times. With that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this application.
We do need to delete.
Will we get, will we get the comment next time? The proposed development does not meet the comprehensive plan goals of providing street layouts and new subdivisions which provide direct connections to nearby destinations? Is that going to be solved?
Connecting to nearby destinations? We connect to the only two arterials.
That's what I'm reading, is a comprehensive plan issue.
All we can connect to are the arterials that border our site, which we do.
And you know, those streets was already in place. They inherited that with this development.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I know, that's why I didn't really, you know, that was kind of hard for me to get my arms around that piece, because that was one thing, it did not connect the other layout where they had the single-family broken up, and where it didn't connect, I could see some of the connectivity there. But this is, from what I've reviewed, is very much like it was from the beginning, the PUD that we approved when the bank had it.
We do need to delete the TE two, unlike I said, because we were at the...
Yeah, I amend my motion to approve it with the deletion of TE two.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 37. Cast your votes. It's approved.
Thank you.
Item 38 is continued. Item 39 is PUD 1536 to rezon 1140 Northwest 164th Street from R1, PUD 1239, and PUD 1364 to PUD 1536.
Mark Ferris with Red Plains Professional, representing the applicant. Before you is a rezoning into a PUD as described, approximately 28 and a half acres. As just recently described by Mr. Box, this is a product that is existing in the city of Oklahoma City and very successful, the Edinburgh and the Murfield additions. We think we've made some slight adjustments in our PUD that addresses connectivity within the subdivision, and by looping some streets and providing additional green belt. As far as the TEs go, we agree with one and three. TE number two seems to be in conflict with the PUD itself, and ask that that be stricken. And TE number four, either removed or made reference to a preliminary plat approval for street width. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Now, the setback that you're proposing, which conforms to R1ZL, is what exactly?
The setbacks that we are proposing are less than required in the zero lot line along the frontage. What we did was we took, looked at the Edinburgh and the Murfield plats and zoning and PUD, and slightly increased what they were approved for setbacks in the frontage. So we were trying to increase that. To answer your direct question... I'm sorry, let me look for that. What we're proposing on the front setback, sir, is eight foot for a dwelling or a side-entry garage, 17 foot for a garage itself, providing for a minimum 20-foot driveway for proper car parking off the street. And then side yards would be eight foot for corner lots, eight foot in the rear.
Now, you have sidewalks thrown, is that correct?
We have sidewalks proposed throughout the majority. We're trying to encourage walking. We do not have sidewalks proposed along what we call the looped private driveways. We provided a sidewalk plan to the planning department. I'm sorry, I don't have that available with me. The main street coming in is heavily landscaped, and sidewalk will be provided out to 164th Street, which presently has existing sidewalks. There's a main, what we call a spine street running east-west, which we provide a sidewalk. So, walkability within the addition is definitely proposed.
And you also have pedestrian gateways about to 164th?
Right, we've provided four 30-foot wide green belts with sidewalks that will connect to the major green belt that we're providing along 164th to provide the walkability out to 164th and some of the commercial developments that are now, just now occurring at the corner of 164th and Western.
So I guess if you're, if I'm looking at your, this diagram.
Yes, sir.
Your houses look like they front, do they front onto the dark streets, is that correct?
Yes, sir, those are our private driveways.
Okay. So there's no sidewalks back in there, but you're saying there's a sidewalk along the north-south street?
Along the main entry coming in, as well as along the main east-west street along the south. There are sidewalks there. We felt that if you lived in the middle of the block, you'd have approximately 100 to 125 feet to walk until you reached sidewalk. And from there, you could go north to 164th, you could walk and loop throughout the addition as well.
So really, to get to the sidewalks, you've got to walk in the street for a distance?
A lot of time.
A lot of two.
That would be true, yes.
So what about putting sidewalks just on one side of the street to get to that major sidewalk?
It's too tight.
It's very tight. We didn't feel that not having sidewalks on the looped drives was a great detriment. There's a short distance, we wanted to maintain the green space as much as possible.
The pedestrian plan also has the green belts in those accesses out to 164th. When I looked at this, I didn't have any problem. The, I'm really impressed with the, with all the pedestrian access.
What's the average depth on your lots? What's the size of your lots, the average size of the lots?
The average size of the lots is 75 foot on the front, 80 foot in depth. 6,000 square feet.
Thank you. No one signed up, Commissioners?
I do approve or I'm deleting TE two.
Second. Motion and second to approve item 39. Cast your votes. It's approved. Who's not, Mike, you're, we don't have Mike's light on now.
I'm voting.
How did we get our lights back, anyway? We don't know, huh? Oh, okay.
And item 40 is C6602, the preliminary plat of the vintages at Camden Park.
Mark Ferris with Red Plains Professional. The preliminary plat is identical or mimics the master plan that you just, that we've just discussed as far as the streets and the connectivity. The staff is not recommending approval for some issues that they don't have authority over because of the code, and it, and I think it's some issues that are unique to this plan and this layout that provides the concept similar to the Edinburgh. What we've done, Edinburgh and Murfield are private drives that have six homes per drive, 22 feet wide. They dead-end. In working with the Fire Marshal's Office, he encouraged us to provide the loops, so that you have the connectivity, so that no matter where you pull in, there are no dead ends. There's always a loop, there's always a way to get out. And in providing that, this layout initiated some of the conflicts with the staff and the TEs. Specifically in the TEs, we have no issues with 1, 2, 10, 11, 12, or 15. The others are generally related to the street widths and the design of those streets. And I would like to go through each of those if that's your pleasure, or I'd answer any questions at this time.
Do you intend to sprinkle the homes?
No, sir. In working with the Fire Marshal, his request was either fire sprinkle the homes or provide a secondary emergency access to 164th, which is what is proposed in the easterly, the far east loop. There's a 30-foot green belt, and we're proposing a platted 30-foot wide emergency access easement, and that satisfied the Fire Marshal.
They don't require, they didn't have a paving requirement?
Hard access?
Hard access, 20-foot wide minimum.
Okay.
There are some of these TEs that may take some work. You know, I don't have a, for example, TE four. I think there's a, perhaps a debate on what's a private street and what's a private drive that may need to be resolved. What you're proposing and calling private drives are what in Edinburgh basically was a sea of concrete of multiple parking lots. So I see that one as perhaps being some clarification. Same with no more than six lots take access from a private drive access. Well, again, put the sea of concrete in like Edinburgh and get around that. Well, that's the very thing the Fire Marshal kind of took exception to, to make the loop. So, we have a conflict on five. With so many of these TEs in question, I'm wondering if maybe you shouldn't take two weeks, sit down with staff, and have a full discussion of what these things are, and see if some of them can be resolved.
I am absolutely willing to do that. I would like to maybe take five minutes of your time and address some of these to see if, in fact, that might address some of your concerns, or if you just don't want me to do that, that's fine as well. I think they can be easily explained.
Well, I have an advantage in that I've looked at the overall master plan and understand this perhaps better than someone just looking at a staff report.
Yes, sir.
But there, these, some of these TEs create doubt, question, that I think really could probably be, it would probably be better if it was resolved at the staff level first, and then let us have another shot at it. But that's entirely up to you.
I'm inclined to agree with you, Nick, because volume, I think that'd be better for us.
Then I would request that we continue this item for two weeks.
Two? Go move. Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue item 40 to June 26th. Cast your votes. And it's continued. Thank you. We'll see you then.
Item 41 is PC 10364 to rezon A20 South Council from R1 I2 and Scenic River Overlay to I2 Moderate Industrial District.
My name is Dennis Box. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Wayne Knoll is here also. We've got a couple of exhibits we'd like to show you, but to start out, I want to make sure the commission's aware that Wayne also owns the property that fronts on I40 that runs to Rockwell from the east. He has a trucking facility, has built the first pad site on that facility. He at present time is a cul-de-sac, but he has plans to where he wants to pull a bridge over this site and go to the site that will hook up on Council Road. The staff report talks about a PUD, and we've asked for a straight I2, because if you'll, if you look at the maps, have you handed out those maps? If you looked at the maps that David Box handed out, you'll see a number of I2 and I1, C3 uses, C4. But I think it's important for you all to kind of focus on I40. If we go west of this site, you have the TA Truck Stop, you've got Truck Wash, you've got a motel, you've got Excel Machinery Limited, Southwest Diesel Services, WB Services Inc., Heartland Used Truck Sales, another truck sales, New Highland Ag Sales. Across the street, you've got a number of industrial uses, which would include a party paint and body shop, truck sales, truck accessory shop, extreme spray liner shop, BMW trailer hitches. So, you ask, well, what does that matter? The problem we have, and as you look at the staff report on the comprehensive plan, it says the comprehensive plan encourages commercial development at regional activity centers. The plan does not support industrial development. Now, I recognize the fact that there's an outlet mall that is constructed to the north of the site, but to put blinders on and say that industrial development was not appropriate in this area would be inconsistent with what has been used and developed over the last 50-plus years. Now, the industrial uses were in existence long before the outlet mall, which, as you'll note, is on property zone I2, was developed. And what that says is, we don't agree that only commercial development is appropriate. So, we're in a dilemma. We don't necessarily oppose PUDs, but it would be ridiculous for us to come back with a PUD and then have the staff say, it's not in conformance, you should deny it. I think we have to be realistic in regard to the fact that this area, although it might develop for commercial uses, in all probability, developed for a mix between commercial and industrial uses. And I'd like for you to listen to Wayne Knoll, who's spent a lot of money, time, and effort. And this tract, although it's 59 acres, we're going to be able to develop between 20 and 25 acres that's out of the floodplain. So, it's much smaller than you would anticipate. Two other things have taken place. Mr. Knoll worked out an agreement with the city to provide for the walking trails on the south portion of the site, and also worked out an agreement with the city for easements to allow for infrastructure to be developed. So with that, Wayne?
My name's Wayne Knoll. I live at 2201 Don Marie, here in Oklahoma City. I've lived here all my life. I have been in business here in Oklahoma City all my life. I own a company called Fox Brick and Stone, typical 1950 baby boomer that's watched the city evolve, along with myself. Every time I look in the mirror, I kind of see some evolution going on. This is not the first time I've dealt with the city with stuff, but this is one of the first times I've come to actually ask you guys for some permission. What's happened to me in the past is you all have come to me for various things, and I've always worked with you. I've been through more than one case where we did not have to go through condemnation to get things that you all wanted. And as Dennis was saying, this piece here is totally surrounded with I2. And in order for me to perpetuate, spend the money, take the risk, to put in a road, to bring it up out of the floodplain, to do all these things without any involvement of the city, without asking for any tax incentives or any special monies, you know, for it to be all on my back, I need, you know, not to be hobbled going into the deal. And you can tell from what I've done in the past with the piece on I40 and Rockwell, that, you know, I put in a facility that brings a lot of tax revenue to the city, and also a lot of high-paying technical jobs. So, I'm not going to say that this property someday may not go commercial, but I don't want to be walking into it where I can't at least be flexible. And there's just not a... And there's just not enough property there to, to be able to say, well, you know, you can do this, and you can do this, and you can do this. Also, as I mentioned, and Dennis mentioned, everything around there is I-2. So if I was so inclined to do something that would be a detriment to the area, I would have already done it, because I certainly could have, next to Kenworth. I've had the opportunity to rent that property out to pipe yards and various things like that, but I've always declined. And I know it's somewhat of a leap of faith for somebody to come up here and tell you guys, well, I'm going to do this, I'm going to do that. But I'm a big believer in looking at what people have done, maybe not so much what they say they're going to do. And if you see what I have done in the past 13 years, then you can kind of see what I'm trying to do with this. If you have any questions, I'm sure, try to answer them.
Well, I'm thinking that the concern that the staff expresses that we certainly have to consider is that the sites within the environmental conservation area, which typically doesn't provide for industrial, you're also on the appearance corridor, and the plan asks for PUDs, just so we can deal with appearance specifically. I don't personally have a problem with some combination of industrial and commercial, or however you might do it. I'd be a lot more comfortable with the protection of a PUD in terms of what the design would be and how it would appear from the highway, and not, not to prohibit you from industrial, but to feel like we better protect the area that runs along the river, and I just think that's the appropriate path to take.
Well, and I understand those concerns, but again, I think you need to look at, you know, the source here. I sold the city about 120 days ago, 14 and 1/2 acres along the riverfront. One of the requests that I made to them was that in this area that they're cutting through behind this piece that we're talking about, that they not just totally destroy the virgin forest in there. And they agreed to do that, you know, not in, not in writing, but in talking to them. They said, you know, we're, we're looking for something natural. Between this area that the city got, which is basically to the center of the river, there is going to be a rather large belt, green belt, if you want to call it that, that's not going to be developed, because it's going to be below the floodplain. There might be some parking going on in there, depends on how it lays out. So there's going to be, at least from the city's investment of the riverfront and the trail system, that's not going to be a problem. Now, if you want to compare the outlet malls across the street, I guess everyone has a different perception about how pretty that is. I'm, it's not my favorite thing to look at when I drive by, you know, there's a lot of stucco and ephes and, and some tents sticking up, but I don't think that there would be any question as to whether whatever we put there would be as attractive as over there. And again, if you look at the Kenworth facility, you know, and, and we were lucky enough to put something similar to that, they have a beautiful facility there. And, you know, it's attractive from the street, it's, there's, there's nothing wrong with that. Plus, it brings a combination of not just retail sales jobs, it brings in some technical jobs. And I think everybody here has had their stuff worked on enough to know how much money technical people make. So, you know, as I mentioned, I think it's a good combination. But my concern is, is to go in and you guys say, well, we want you to do this, and we want you to do this, and we want you to do this. It can't do that. And, and I think, again, to hobble me to do that is not going to be conducive. It's a huge investment to put that road in. It's a huge investment to put that bridge in, and not to mention what I've already got going on there. And it's a huge timetable to fill in this area, to get it to the point to where someone can put something there. So the alternative is, of course, to do nothing and to wait for a user to come along and say, well, you know, we want this property and we're going to go fight this fight for you, or you can allow me to continue doing what I've been doing. And, you know, I admit there's a bit of a leap of faith there, but I, again, am a big believer in looking at what I've done, not what I say I'm going to do. And so you're not just talking to someone that's, that's, you know, from California that's come here to make some quick bucks, you're talking to somebody that's been here all, all their life. Does that make sense?
Mr. Trump, certainly you're, you're no, we need to understand, you're no issue. We're not.
Understand that. It's not a personal thing.
And we don't doubt your good citizenship for a minute. Obviously, the things you've done for and with the city are generous things to have done. So whatever decision we might make here does not have anything to say about that, just so you know. Go ahead, James.
I believe it's business, but...
You know, when I look at it, and, and when I look around, you see all I-2, and, and it seems like it's appropriate for all of it to be I-2. But the observation is, one, the zoning goes along with the land. It's not, not, not an issue with you.
I'm sorry.
But it goes along with the land. But then, if I'm not mistaken, the safety net we have here for some of the things, we'd like to put it in a PUD for dealing with the appearance of buildings, dealing with the appearance corridor and the river, the river. I think whatever the zoning, he still has to adhere to the riverfront committees and regulations. And I think he still had to, he don't have to commit, he don't have to submit to the riverfront.
This is actually the Scenic River Overlay, but not in the Design District, so it does not have to go to that committee. It's a different type of zoning.
Well, then that's... It is an appearance corridor, isn't it?
He's still...
I thought it was an appearance corridor. My, my conflict is similar to what, what James was saying. My, my initial thought when I looked at the application was bring it back as an I-2 PUD. And you say it'd be hobbled, I don't necessarily want that...
Maybe that's not the correct terminology, but you understand the, the point.
Don't necessarily want that I, that I-2 PUD to hobble you. But then when I, when I got to, to looking at it more closely, I noticed what, in driving it, I noticed what's along here, and it is all sprayed I-2. It is an appearance corridor, so, you know, there's some protection we would get in a PUD because of the appearance corridor anyway. So that, that leaves me conflicted. The, I thought you could develop a little more than 20, 40% of it, but you said 21 of the 50-something acres.
There's approximately, actually, what, it started off as 74 acres. The city's purchased about six of that for their trails. The, so that's probably a net of around 60-something acres. So there's still going to be about 25 along I-40 that's going to be brought up out of the floodplain because of the, of the fact of, you know, getting the hydrology correct and various things like that. That's what's going to be there. Everything below that, you know, you can't build on. So there's not, there's not, it's not going to be like out at someplace that can sit way back and have a huge lawn in front. That's not going to happen, because there's just not enough land there.
Oh, no, I understand that.
Yeah.
Again, somewhat of a conflict because of getting some protection with the appearance corridor and it's a sea of I-2.
I don't, yeah, I'm kind of, I think that, I don't have a problem with the zoning. It, you know, it, you want straight I-2, nothing, nothing else, I get that. Really, all I, my, my concern about this, again, is just some sort of protection and screening with respect to I-40. That's it. I mean, the rest of it, I'm pretty well, I, you know, that's the only reason I, I would suggest a PUD. In fact, you know, you want straight I-2 zoning, no restriction, you know, the only way I can get my screening along I-40 is to ask for a PUD so I get some landscape restrictions and things like that. With respect to that...
I think the parents' corridor addresses that along I-40.
Does it, does it address it as much as we'd like?
No, not as much as we'd like, but...
I mean, I, I mean, I know what you're saying, Bill, but you know, I'm not, look, if, if you came to me with a landscape plan that says this is where we'll do along I-40 to screen I-40, I'm with you. And that's, that's my only, because I, I agree that there are times that perhaps a PUD is not the answer. Zoning is the answer. In this case, but for I-40, I would, it's appropriate screening along there, I'd agree with you for it.
Audrey tells me I-2 zoning does not tie to appearance corridors. We'd have to have that in the PUD.
That's the thing, and I...
Appearance corridor is a land use designation in the comp plan. It's not tied to zoning like a landscape buffer.
But, but do you all realize our dilemma? When you read the staff report, if we came back with a PUD that had mixed uses, we'd have a recommendation for denial.
I don't know that you can say that, Dennis.
I, I don't think that...
It says the comprehensive plan encourages commercial development of regional activity centers. It does not support industrial development within environmental conservation areas.
Yeah. You have both environmental conservation, appearance corridor stipulations for this site. So you have to balance that, and we suggested that the PUD was the tool that you could do that, since you have those conditions existing on the same site.
So are you, are you telling Wayne that if we came back with a PUD, you would be okay with industrial and commercial uses within this 25 acres?
Provided...
That's what you're hoping...
I'll tell you, I'll tell you that I would be if it was, if you bought in another Kenworth facility. Absolutely.
Or just screened along I, I mean, I'm looking at the landscaping. I'm not wanting to restrict your I-2 use because it's consistent with this. I want, I, we did a bad job in the past out along I-40, Mr. Knoll, I'm not saying you did, but a lot of others have done really bad jobs along there. And if we get an opportunity to, to improve that, I think it benefits us all. I think it would benefit your property. I don't have an objection to I, the I-2 use or mixed commercial in that. I think it's, I think it's appropriate for the area. My only concern, like I said, is screening, is getting some landscape buffer with respect to I-40 and, and that along there. I think that, that might be something you might try to...
And there are plenty of examples within your, your picture you handed out here of what we don't want there, okay? You know, I-2 zoning. And that's our concern.
Dennis, this is consistent...
We don't want stuff to do with you.
Yeah.
This is consistent with a phone call you and I had earlier in the day, which I said I thought a PUD would accomplish what you want. Now, we're not trying to prevent.
And, and I appreciate the comments from the commissioners, and based on that, we'd request the 38 continuance. What I didn't want to do was come back with a PUD and then have the same report that didn't want any mixed uses, and then my client would be saying, why'd I hire you?
Yeah.
He'd probably say that anyway.
He, he may ask that anyway, Dennis, but I can only express my concerns, that what I see based on your design, et cetera, that, that I, I think that, that gets this thing where I'm going to be pretty happy.
Let's continue at 60 days, and that'll give us a chance to go back and...
60?
Yeah, because if you have a PUD, it'll, it'll take that long to get new notices.
So that was, that would be July?
No, August.
Be August. First meeting in August?
August 14th or August 28th?
14th or 28th.
August 14th.
So the one meeting in August.
Yeah, one meeting in July and one meeting in August.
So August 14th is the meeting, or the first meeting in September.
And thank you all for your comments.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Before we go to the next matter, I have another meeting that I need to go to. So if we had, I notice that we have an executive session matter...
We're not going to, I don't think we'll need to go into that, but we'll talk about that in a minute. I think we can, I think we can deal with that from the horseshoe.
Okay.
Where are you? I'm here. Okay, we need a motion and a second to vote on the continuance.
Until the first meeting in August.
August 14th?
August 14th.
Okay. Cast your votes, and we will see Dennis on August 14th.
Item 42 is C 6611 preliminary plat, at Fieldstone, Section 4, located east of County Line and south of Southwest 44th Street.
Hi, Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates. Almost forgot who I was. This is a, as you can see by the drawing, this is an infill project. There's, if you were to scan to the north, you could see that the development to the north is continuing to develop. It's actually preliminary platted to one more street section to the east. We're filling in, and we're proposing to attach to their stub street that was required, and the small addition south, north of the creek, has a stub, and we're connecting to those two stubs. And then there are two, then, connections to County Line Road at that point. This original, this staff report originally recommended that we defer because of, we had some confusion and some vacations regarding traffic impact, and we got that resolved. So, but I do need six votes for a couple of variances. I don't know if Mr. Allen's coming back. With regard to the TEs, we agree with all the TEs. We are requesting a connection, a variance to the additional connection to County Line, simply because we're already connecting to two existing points that have been platted and planned, north and south. I, there was a, a couple here earlier, Rachel Dodd, who lives immediately north of where this addition goes, and I met with her in the hall, and she had some questions, I answered her questions. But in that conversation, I did agree to add, to ask the staff to add a TE number nine that would require our developer to have a construction entrance off of County Line until the development is completed, so that we're not taking our cement trucks and construction trucks through their addition.
Well, that's great, Tim, because that ties into my thought, because I think you need access from County Line. It's sort of a involved way for these folks to get in and out without, in the absence of that direct connection. And I only count five people sitting here, by the way.
Right, that's what I said. I was hoping Mr. Allen was coming back.
He may be, but he's... But in any case, it would take six votes.
We, our addition is one block north of where there's an existing connection to County Line. So the, the comment about getting into the addition being complicated, I really think it's kind of traffic calming. There are, I don't know that there's anybody else here to speak about this. We've not had any calls or anything regarding the concern of connecting to the neighborhood. And it, it gives us about 1,600-foot separation along County Line. You know, I just thought it was a great plan to use the connectivity that the planning commission likes to have. I mean, what...
Oh, I'm fine with the application, except for connecting to County Line.
I guess my question might be is, what does the planning commission see as a benefit by making that additional connection?
Easier ingress and egress, egress for the people who live there. I mean, I just, it just sort of involves to get out of that section either north or south.
Well...
It's, it's just more wandering around it.
Keeps those cars going slow.
I'm sorry?
Keeps those cars driving slowly.
Yes, while they're trying to figure out where they have to get out, huh?
Well, you know, given that, I would agree to go ahead and add a connection to South County Line.
Yeah.
Out to the west. And we'll finalize that on the final plat, if that would be acceptable.
Okay, that would. Actually, I don't think I'm the only one who wanted that, but that's fine. Well, with deleting TE 3 then? Anyone signed up, commissioners?
Two.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh.
We still need to...
All right.
It's variance on 3.
Oh, the number 3 is the variance of the offset, I'm sorry. My mistake. So TE 2 remains, and we have a variance to TE 3.
I'm with variance 3.
Second. A motion and a second to approve the variance to TE 3. Cast your votes. That's approved.
Sorry, add TE 9.
Correct. Well, that'll be solved with the entrance.
Solved with the entrance.
That's right. And then the access.
Right. Okay, we have motion and a second to approve item 42 as conditioned. Cast your votes. Okay, we have motion and a second to approve item 42's condition, cast your votes, and that's approved. Thank you, Tim.
Item 43 is an ordinance to amend Section 9350 of Chapter 59. We introd this last time. This is a correction to what we had adopted back in December called the Urban Agriculture Ordinance. The background of this was that we presented an ordinance to council that lumped together some different urban agriculture uses and provisions with something that would allow backyard chickens. Council asked us to split those two ordinances apart. A provision that deleted a line that defined the minimum lot size to keep those animals, not just chickens, but the other types of animals, inadvertently was left into the Urban Agriculture Ordinance. So since the backyard chicken ordinance didn't pass, this is going back and correcting that that was missed in the first ordinance and restoring it back as it was. At the same time, those uses that were not allowed when that provision was struck are grandfathered in with a provision that in three months after the adoption date, they would have to be brought back into compliance with the code.
So grandfather doesn't live very long.
Do you want to add anything, Dan? Did I say that correctly?
All right, Sarah, you want to talk to us? Sarah Braden has signed up. If you give us your name and address, Sarah, for the record.
Sarah Braden, 1143 Northwest 38th Street, and I'll be brief. I, I understand that this is correcting a mistake, but I just wanted to find out, is there any way to, you know, move in a direction of removing chickens from the one acre or more list, which includes cattle, horses, sheep, goats, asses, mules, and swine, and moving chickens to the list of, you know, less than an acre, which includes, you know, four dogs or cats? My understanding of the municipal code, that list also includes parrots, parakeets, canaries, cockatiels, cockatoos, and finches that are allowed on less than an acre. I've, I also noticed that museum, an American pigeon museum opened on May 20, and in Oklahoma City, and Oklahoma City is also the headquarters of the American Racing Pigeon Union. I just found this out in the last few hours. And the woman I spoke with earlier today from the American Racing Pigeon Union was very surprised at the question of whether there were any lot size limits on, you know, how many racing pigeons you can have in Oklahoma City. I asked her how many, typically how many racing pigeons a person in Oklahoma City might have. She said, certainly it would not be unusual for someone to have 100 or more racing pigeons. So I understand, again, it's a correction of a mistake. Is there any way we can move towards taking chickens off that place?
Well, Marlon Brando had a whole bunch of pigeons on that rooftop in Brooklyn and on the waterfront, I remember that. The unfortunate thing, Sarah, is if we add chickens to this, the city council's going to send it right back to us, and if we add chickens again, they're going to send it right back to us. So it's, it is there, not here. As you know, the first time around, we approved chickens nine.
Long ago.
Mm-hmm, I remember.
We are not your obstacle, but if we add chickens, it's just going to be right back here in two or four weeks.
Okay, so, take it back to city council and.
That's, they're the people.
Try and get city council to send it back to you.
That's what's been happening while you're here.
We've been with you right along.
I know, and I appreciate that.
Well, and then I might just remind you that the very first proposal that we heard at city council did exactly what you're saying. It took chickens specifically out of that one acre, and that was denied. So it would be asking them to reconsider something that they've already denied once.
Okay.
And so we came back with a second proposal to try to attach a different process and conditions to it, and that was, again, denied. So I don't know that there's another way that we could request that without being the same thing that they've already considered.
Okay, part of your recommending that they reinstate the one acre can't include a little side note of.
You mean slip a chicken in?
This is basically just putting it back to what it would have been if the mistake hadn't been made in the first place.
Okay, well, I appreciate your patience and your support, thanks.
We're sorry we can't help, Frank.
We tried.
So we need a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
We have motion and a second to approve item 43, cast your votes, and that's approved.
And item 44 is Resolution 2, amend and restate downtown MAPS economic development project and project plan. And I think this is an item from Brent Bryant, I'm not sure.
Brent presented this today in the study session. Okay, the motion is to approve the resolution, item 44, cast your votes, that's approved.
And then item 45 is a resolution of the planning commission directing the municipal council to enter into a settlement agreement for a district court case of lone oak versus the city of Oklahoma City Planning Commission. More enter in executive session.
We don't need to go into executive session unless somebody has any questions. Nick authorized me to say that he doesn't have any problems with it, he supports it. Really, it gets everything that we ever wanted from those guys.
I also approve it, and the only change to what we're looking at today from what was sent to us in our packets is some language in the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, whereas adding, subject to municipal council, finalizing the specific terms of a settlement agreement.
Right. Wanting to give ourselves a little wiggle room, but make sure that.
It's papered up properly?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to authorize the municipal council to enter into the settlement agreement. Cast your votes, that's approved.
The remaining items are continued, so that's all for the docket.
Planning commission committees? Planning commissioners?
I'd like to share with the group that I believe this is my last meeting with the, as planning commissioner. I appreciated the staff's work and support during the, my tenure of 18 to 20 years, and it's been a pleasure staying with you guys. I think we've made a big difference in the renaissance of this city, and keep up the good work. Thank you for everything.
Well, James, we're going to miss you. I understand that the new ward seventh commissioner will be appointed at the next council meeting if, if nothing changes. And what I'd like to suggest, commissioners, is that before our next meeting on June 28, we gather for lunch, take James to lunch, and celebrate his being with us, if you'd all consider doing that. You're invited, Aubrey. You can come too, Dan, if you behave.
Oh, I don't know about that.
It's been a treat getting to know you and becoming your friend. Thank you. Planning department? Development services?
They're gone.
They let, no, they're not gone. Sarah's here. Municipal council's office?
Not a thing.
Okay, motion to adjourn. We're done.